Good evening, everyone. Today is November 18th, 2025. We are at the City of Cape Canaveral Regular City Council Meeting at the City Hall Council Chambers located at 100 Polk Avenue in the city of Cape Canaveral. I call this meeting to order. And with that, Mayor Pro Tim Kellum, would you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our city clerk, please call the roll for the outgoing city council.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Kellum.
Here.
Mayor Morrison.
Here.
And Councilmember Willis.
Here.
Thank you all for being here and everyone from the community who is a part of this. This is obviously a special day and council, if unless there's, you know, concern here, I'd like to make a slight change. We just finished up item number three, the roll call of the outgoing council. If we could just go ahead and go to 6.1 first and 6.2 for our two council members today. Met with the city manager and connected with the city clerk unless that's an issue. Like to proceed. Okay, so tonight, we recognize first council member Kim Davis as she concludes four years of dedicated service to the city of Cape Canaveral. I have respected her commitment to serve in the elected position and her willingness to stand up for what she believed was best for our community. A retired deputy, she first served our city in the early eighties and later stepped up once again, this time as a member of our city council. That dedication to public service is something we should all appreciate. Over the years, even through some differences, we all we found meaningful common ground. We stood together on recent important votes that strengthened the future of Cape Canaveral under new leadership. And we jointly affirmed the recent proclamation that reflected that we all value preserving what makes our city special. Councilmember Davis, thank you for your service and your involvement in local city government. I wish you the best in all that lies ahead.
Thank you.
We've got, obviously, council, we've got something we want to give you from the city of Cape Canaveral honored to give, but council members, if there's any statements, council member Davis, you have the final word before we leave, but Mayor Pro Tim Kellum or council member Jackson, Willis?
No, I just want to say thank you, Kim, for your devoted service. It's it's been a long, rough road for you and you stuck in there and hung in there. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And I would like to say thank you for your service to the community through all that we've all been through and the support for them.
Thank you.
Just wanted to thank you for your willingness to step forward and to lead and to serve our city as better because of the work you've done. And I wish you all the best in future endeavors.
Thank you.
Thank you. But I will have to relay one thing. On our first election night, we were obviously on opposite sides of the street and Kim came over as I was setting up my tent and proceeded to lambast me for where I was setting up my tent.[268.31][268.31](Laughter). But later on, you came back and apologized. We may not have started out as friends, but we are now. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. I'm just going to make it short and say that I it was an honor to see this city, serve the city, and I support all the people that are here and to the staff, the old staff and the new staff, thank you for always being with me and backing me and even when I was sick, you were there. So, thank you.
Okay. And this time, I believe we have something from the city. We can go up front and counsel. If we want to take a photo together as a council, we can do that. Yes, please. out after six years of exceptional service to the city of Cape Canaveral. Mickey has been a steadfast voice of the people. Her willingness to ask tough questions, listen closely to residents and fight for accountability has shaped the direction of our city in lasting ways. She is widely known for her deep commitment to our veterans, from spearheading the redevelopment of Veterans Memorial Park to initiating the Veterans Day Parade and helping honor the 50th anniversary of the Vietnam War, to name a few. Yet her contributions reach far beyond these efforts. Throughout her service, her guiding philosophy has been simple and powerful: take care of what we have. That spirit of stewardship has left an imprint on every decision we've made together. Mayor Pro Tim Kellum, my neighbor and friend, thank you. I wish you the very best as you begin your next chapter. Thank you. Council?
I'll start. Yay, I get to be friends with Mickey again. Those sunshine laws. Thank you so much for everything you've done for our city. You have been a steward for going in and making sure that things are maintained and that we have things under control. You've given back so much to this community over the years and even prior to even being on council. You've always stood by this community and stood by the people here. So, all of your efforts are so appreciated and we wish you much success with what you're going to do next, which will be more VFW stuff, I'm sure. So, the veterans win in this case.
Thank you. Hey, Mickey, I just want to say I'm happy that I met you and we went through a lot together and I wish you the best whatever you're doing after this. So, we'll be friends. Thank you.
I met you the first time a candidate get to know you that I hosted for the three opponents that you faced. And I was impressed with you in that forum and enjoyed hosting you that then and voting for you afterwards. But this job requires patience, dedication, and willingness to listen, and you exemplify all of those. And in light of your leaving council, maybe we can get back to cooking breakfast on Sunday at the VFW. So, since sunshine law won't matter, so thank you.
There you go. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim Kellum.
Yes, I just had to write this down so I can remember. Mayor West, my fellow council members, residents, and staff members, this has been an amazing six-year journey in my life. I've learned a lot. I've probably asked a lot of dumb questions, but I've always regarded my duty to the residents as a very serious obligation. Living here for over 35 years, this little town means a great deal to me and we have come a long way. I think we're at the point where we need to decide which path we want to take, which will be decided by this new council. Through my seven years of service here in the city as a councilperson and board member, I have endured a lot of changes in my personal life. Because of this, I'm looking forward to a little peace and quiet. I'm raising my incredible granddaughter Cassidy and looking forward, if that's possible, with a 15-year-old some downtime. But I will show up again in public participation, maybe on a board in the city. After everything, my heart is in this city. To the residents, reach out to your council members. You are their constituents. For the council and staff, I leave you with this: Wrap your arms around our little city. Take care of her. Take care of our trees and our families. Our historic little school and our small local businesses, especially our parks and beaches, which are irreplaceable, beautiful, and one of our greatest assets. Take care of what we have. Look for other ways besides taxpayers for sources of revenue. Just embrace Cape Canaveral for the tiny little city on the hill, as they say, that is so uniquely different from what's north and south of us. Finally, residents, thank you for your trust in me. It's been an honor to serve my neighbors and friends. Thank you very much, and I'll see you around town. Thank you.
So this time, council, if we want to go down front, we can take another photo and give the... Okay. So, thank you again. This time, we have the new council member oath of office for Mr. Thomas Tom Shoryak. Tom, if you are here, you can come forward and our city attorney will meet you down front. At this time, Mr. Councilmember Shoryak would like to take any photos with his friends and family, and we will take a short recess after this and reconvene shortly. Let's try to do a very quick, no more than five-minute recess here, give people who want a chance to transition out and our city clerk and team to change the nameplate. So, let's reconvene here, 6:22 PM if we can. Thank you. Let's try to do a very quick, no more than five-minute recess here, give people who want a chance to transition out and our city clerk and team to change the nameplate. So, let's reconvene here, 6:22 PM if we can. Thank you. It is showing 6:18. Let's try to do a very quick, no more than five-minute recess here, give people who want a chance to transition out and our city clerk and team to change the nameplate. So, let's reconvene here, 6:22 PM if we can. Thank you. It is showing 6:18. Let's try to do a very quick, no more than five-minute recess here, give people who want a chance to transition out and our city clerk and team to change the nameplate. So, let's reconvene here, 6:22 PM if we can. Thank you. It is showing 6:18. Let's try to do a very quick, no more than five-minute recess here, give people who want a chance to transition out and our city clerk and team to change the nameplate. So, let's reconvene here, 6:22 PM if we can. Thank you. It is showing 6:18. Let's try to do a very quick, no more than five-minute recess here, give people who want a chance to transition out and our city clerk and team to change the nameplate. So, let's reconvene here, 6:22 PM if we can. Thank you. It is showing 6:18. Let's try to do a very quick, no more than five-minute recess here, give people who want a chance to transition out and our city clerk and team to change the nameplate. So, let's reconvene here, 6:22 PM if we can. Thank you. It is showing 6:18. Let's try to do a very quick, no more than five-minute recess here, give people who want a chance to transition out and our city clerk and team to change the nameplate. So, let's reconvene here, 6:22 PM if we can. Thank you. It is showing 6:18. Let's try to do a very quick, no more than five-minute recess here, give people who want a chance to transition out and our city clerk and team to change the nameplate. So, let's reconvene here, 6:22 PM if we can. Thank you. It is showing 6:18. Let's try to do a very quick, no more than five-minute recess here, give people who want a chance to transition out and our city clerk and team to change the nameplate. So, let's reconvene here, 6:22 PM if we can. Thank you. It is showing 6:18. Let's try to do a very quick, no more than five-minute recess here, give people who want a chance to transition out and our city clerk and team to change the nameplate. So, let's reconvene here, 6:22 PM if we can. Thank you. It is showing 6:18. Let's try to do a very quick, no more than five-minute recess here, give people who want a chance to transition out and our city clerk and team to change the nameplate. So, let's reconvene here, 6:22 PM if we can. Thank you. It is showing 6:18. Let's try to do a very quick, no more than five-minute recess here, give people who want a chance to transition out and our city clerk and team to change the nameplate. So, let's reconvene here, 6:22 PM if we can. Thank you. It is showing 6:18. Let's try to do a very quick, no more than five-minute recess here, give people who want a chance to transition out and our city clerk and team to change the nameplate. So, let's reconvene here, 6:22 PM if we can. Thank you. It is showing 6:18. Let's try to do a very quick, no more than five-minute recess here, give people who want a chance to transition out and our city clerk and team to change the nameplate. So, let's reconvene here, 6:22 PM if we can. Thank you. It is showing 6:18. Let's try to do a very quick, no more than five-minute recess here, give people who want a chance to transition out and our city clerk and team to change the nameplate. So, let's reconvene here, 6:22 PM if we can. Thank you. It is showing 6:18. Let's try to do a very quick, no more than five-minute recess here, give people who want a chance to transition out and our city clerk and team to change the nameplate. So, let's reconvene here, 6:22 PM if we can. Thank you. It is showing 6:18. Let's try to do a very quick, no more than five-minute recess here, give people who want a chance to transition out and our city clerk and team to change the nameplate. So, let's reconvene here, 6:22 PM if we can. Thank you. It is showing 6:18. Let's try to do a very quick, no more than five-minute recess here, give people who want a chance to transition out and our city clerk and team to change the nameplate. So, let's reconvene here, 6:22 PM if we can. Thank you. It is showing 6:18. Let's try to do a very quick, no more than five-minute recess here, give people who want a chance to transition out and our city clerk and team to change the nameplate. So, let's reconvene here, 6:22 PM if we can. Thank you. It is showing 6:18. Let's try to do a very quick, no more than five-minute recess here, give people who want a chance to transition out and our city clerk and team to change the nameplate. So, let's reconvene here, 6:22 PM if we can. Thank you. It is showing 6:18. Let's try to do a very quick, no more than five-minute recess here, give people who want a chance to transition out and our city clerk and team to change the nameplate. So, let's reconvene here, 6:22 PM if we can. Thank you. It is showing 6:18. Let's try to do a very quick, no more than five-minute recess here, give people who want a chance to transition out and our city clerk and team to change the nameplate. So, let's reconvene here, 6:22 PM if we can. Thank you. It is showing 6:18. Let's try to do a very quick, no more than five-minute recess here, give people who want a chance to transition out and our city clerk and team to change the nameplate. So, let's reconvene here, 6:22 PM if we can. Thank you. It is showing 6:18. Let's try to do a very quick, no more than five-minute recess here, give people who want a chance to transition out and our city clerk and team to change the nameplate. So, let's reconvene here, 6:22 PM if we can. Thank you. It is showing 6:18. Let's try to do a very quick, no more than five-minute recess here, give people who want a chance to transition out and our city clerk and team to change the nameplate. So, let's reconvene here, 6:22 PM if we can. Thank you. I'll take one, pass it down.
Give me that back. You have... See the top?
Oh, oh. They have designated...
You put names on them. I see. We have designated ballots and he was going to fill out someone else's inadvertently. So, I just stopped. Sorry. Sorry, I was figuring that out myself.
Here's the extra.
The extra? Is there an extra?
Yeah, we can give those first.
No.
You can pass it down, Councilmember Shoryak, and we'll... One more. Oh, two more.
Based on the ballots received, we got a majority for Ms. Jackson to become the next Mayor Pro Tim. I would ask that the city council adopt a motion to that regard.
To appoint?
To approve the ballots.
Looking for a motion to approve the ballots to select Councilmember Jackson as Mayor Pro Tim.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Second, yeah, okay.
Who's second?
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Jackson, a second by Councilmember Shoryak. Got a motion by Councilmember Jackson, a second by Councilmember Shoriak. Any discussion? My own thing is assuming you are willing to serve in that capacity?
Yes, I am willing to serve in that capacity.
That's all I have. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none. City Clerk?
Mayor pro tem, Jackson.
Four.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Shoriak.
Four.
And Councilmember Willis.
Four.
All right. Congratulations, Mayor pro tem... Excuse... New day. That's rolled off my tongue too many times. Mayor pro tem, Jackson, if you would like to take this seat and council wanted to sit down or stay where you're seated, I think it's up to you, but... Council, as we're getting settled in and transitioning, we are going to move to the approval of agenda as written or with amendments. I do not have any changes that I think we're good there.
Mayor Morrison?
Yes.
Item number nine point three.
Oh, that's right. Okay, so I spoke with the city manager. I think we're going to take really no action for item nine point three, which was an applicant interview. So when we get to that item, we don't have any business because I think Mr. Bell is not here today. So I don't think we need to remove it from the agenda, city attorney. If we just, once we get to that, it's going to stay in the same order and...
Absolutely. Right, I'll just move it to the next.
Okay, so that's one change. Item nine point three. Like to move to the next council meeting. And that would also impact the resolution. Why can't I find the resolution? There it is. So that would, twelve point four as well. So nine point two, thank you, city attorney, and twelve point four are changes.
Correct.
We will handle it the next council meeting. Are there any other changes, council? And Councilmember Shoriak, this is something new we implemented. You know, sometimes the day of the meeting, things change. Sometimes we want to add on things. So this time, if there's an order change, removing something, we will vote on the agenda as written or as amended. So... Okay, I'll go ahead and make the motion that we approve the agenda as amended by removing items nine point three and twelve point four.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Mayor Morrison, second by Councilmember Willis. Any further discussion? Seeing none. City Clerk?
Mayor pro tem, Jackson.
Four.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Shoriak.
Four.
And Councilmember Willis.
Four.
Thank you. At this time, we are at the presentations and interviews portion of the meeting. Item nine. Yes, Councilmember Willis?
Pardon me a second. I need to collect some things that Councilmember Jackson picked up by mistake.
I think this is... This is your... I'm sorry.
I think the pen was intentional.
The pen is necessary. That's one you don't want to... Now I have everyone watching.
So at this time, our first presentation is a special one. I've got a proclamation here. I'm going to go ahead and read that here and come down front. This is an official proclamation of the city of Cape Canaveral, Florida honoring Commander Byron Keck. Whereas Commander Byron Keck, a lifelong Brevard County resident, born and raised in Melbourne, Florida, attended O'Gally High School, graduated from Brevard Community College with a Bachelor of Arts degree, holds a Bachelor of Science degree in criminal justice from the University of Central Florida, and graduated from the United States Coast Guard. Serves where he served for more than 21 years, retired as chief petty officer, where he holds a master captain's license. And whereas Commander Keck began his law enforcement career in 1995 with the Sarasota County Sheriff's Office, worked in 1996 for the Brevard County Sheriff's Office as a patrol deputy, and having been promoted through the ranks, he was assigned as precinct commander to Port Canaveral and the city of Cape Canaveral on October 16th, 2021, leading both law enforcement and seaport security. And whereas Commander Keck is a member of the United States Coast Guard Area Maritime Security Committee and serves on the Florida Department of Law Enforcement's Central Florida Regional Domestic Security Task Force Maritime Subcommittee. And whereas throughout his long and industrious career, Commander Keck received one merit bar, two commendable service bars, and numerous other awards, commendations, and letters of appreciation for his dedicated service to the community. And whereas Commander Keck's commitment to service extends well beyond his professional duties, where he is well respected amongst his colleagues and command staff, he is an avid and active participant working closely with the community with numerous public outreach events such as Coffee with a Cop, and he always engaged with the city officials and local organizations to foster safety, trust, and collaboration, where his accessible, approachable, and accountable demeanor, working countless hours beyond a normal schedule, ensured that the community needs were met. And whereas Commander Keck is scheduled to retire from active service with the Brevard County Sheriff's Office on November 21st, 2025, now therefore I, Wes Morrison, mayor of the city of Cape Canaveral, Brevard County, Florida, do hereby recognize and extend heartfelt gratitude to Byron Keck for his selfless service where he exemplifies the highest standards of public service, integrity, and community partnership qualities that continue to make a lasting impact on both the sheriff's office and the citizens he serves. And we wish him well in the next chapter of his life. Signed and sealed this 18th day of November, 2025. Commander Keck, if you'd like to come forward, we'd love to present you.
Well, I'd just like to say thank you to everybody. Just as a great way to show my career. I had nothing but support from all the council, the mayor, the city staff, the residents here. So I've always felt part of the city, being like I was a city employee, and I just have nothing to good things to say. So it's a great team out here. I've got a great team that works for me. That's kind of, they're the ones that do the job. I'm just the figurehead up here, you know, that gets the attention sometimes. But I've been very blessed to have such a good crew to work with. Brian Neal, currently major, soon to be commander, is going to be taking my place. Very well-rounded, has served in a lot of different command capacities throughout the agency, and I know he'll do a great job. And so I just wanted to say thank you again to everybody, and thank you for all the support that you've given me and the men and women that I work for. So, thank you.
At this time, our deputy fire chief is here for item nine point two, which is a commendable service award from the city of Cape Canaveral Volunteer Fire Department to Mr. Derek Buckner.
Come on up, Derek. Okay, so on October 13th, 2025, citizen Derek Buckner observed a swimmer in distress and took immediate action to render aid, demonstrating quick judgment and disregard to his own safety. Mr. Buckner entered the aggressive waters and successfully assisted the individual prior to the arrival of Canaveral Fire Rescue personnel. Canaveral Fire Rescue wants to recognize your outstanding act of kindness and quick response at assisting the fellow citizen in need. Your actions reflect courage, compassion, and a true spirit of community service.
That day, when that occurred, I was checking the mail, and I said, hey, I need to talk to my wife. I'm going to go check the mail. And I heard sirens go off. And I said, well, something headed down to the beach, and actually got to observe our fire department's responsiveness and the efforts of Derek to make that happen. So that's one of those rare moments where we don't see the day-to-day and the work and the grind that our community goes through. And so, thank you for entire volunteer fire department. And I'd like to see if we can do more of that. That's one of the first ones, the first one I've ever done, and I think it is a real special thing. So we appreciate you, Derek, and all that you do to help keep our community safe as a citizen. So thank you. So with that, I am on to, let's see here, we have pulled item number, that completed nine point two. We have pulled item nine point three, which takes us to item nine point four, which is a new city staff introduction. Sir, city manager.
Well, thank you, mayor. And we do have a new part-time recreation leader. His name is Jim Moran. Unfortunately, Mr. Moran could not be here this evening. But just to give a little background on Mr. Moran, he's a retired attorney from New Jersey. He worked in the parks and rec field when he was there before moving to Florida, and he is a business owner in Cocoa Village. So we're looking forward to having him on our team.
Thank you. Welcome to the team, Mr. Moran. Okay, this time, item 10, we are at public participation. If you do intend to speak today, we do ask that you please fill out a card. I've got one up here now. Mr. John Benton, please come forward.
Okay, we're here because of my code reduction hearing. You guys owe me for 10 years. I told you the first year I wasn't going to stop coming until you gave it to me. Well, now I got a few other things. You fired the city manager because he erased one of the email. Email. Well, how about it, Mr. Mayor? I sent you an email. I'm going to request it. One of those people screaming at the city that I was living in my warehouse? I sent it to you, and you sent Detective Mulligan to my house. Tell the city what was in there. It was Darren George Floyd. He was calling all the people out there monkeys and apes, using the N-word in that text message, and I sent it to you. It's disgusting. And you didn't do anything about it because he had a business in this town for 30 years, and his mother goes to the church down, the Catholic church down in Cocoa Beach. His name is James Sabal. When that deputy came to my house, there better be a police report. And you sent him? I never called you on the phone. I didn't, I never called you. I used the email. And I'm going to make a request to it, too. Until this happened in last year, I haven't seen anybody here with color in the 20 years I've lived here of color. Not one. And next, Mayor Randall's that used to be here. He's coming in here saying he's going to donate his retirement to Cape Canaveral. Well, he's just trying to get votes to get back onto the board. Why don't you take, Mr. Randall, why don't you take that money and send it to Globe Arizona? They had a flood there. People died. In 2020 December, I was there, and I gave him $1,000. I'm sitting there with the cop. He gives me a... I was only there for two months, stayed in a fleabag motel. I left a week, and I came, I left after two months. I came back to do that because I missed the town so bad. All right. Now, next thing is I need a lawyer. You'd think a lawyer would take my case to shut it down, shut it down, so I won't come in here and call this lawyer over here to his face that he's a racist Jew.
Hey, we're not going to be boisterous or slanderous, okay?
He's a racist Jew.
You have a microphone. You don't need to yell. Thank you.
And, well, you let people yell at me from here. Three months ago, some guy, I'm Jew. I turned around, I don't care. I don't care if you're a Jew or not. So Randall, send that money there. Maybe I'll back off. And one more thing. I went to the council meeting down there at Melbourne Beach when they censored the mayor for calling one of the other board members an idiot. Well, that was just to get my foot in the front door. So I go down there and ask Randy Fein and tell him what happened here, and ask him if he could help me. And if he doesn't, I'll continue to go to those meetings.
Thank you.
And you guys are a bunch of idiots.
If anyone else intended to speak, please come forward if you don't mind. And we do ask that you fill out a card at some point before you leave today. You've got it. Great. Thank you. Welcome.
One moment. Okay. I don't know if that was an assumption that he made, but... All right. Let's hope this goes a little bit better than that. I'm Luke. I'm running for poet laureate, and I was just wondering if you guys have any questions you'd like to know about the position I intend on filling. And, yeah, I'd love to say a bit about myself.
Luke, thank you so much for introducing yourself. I think we do have an agenda item for the poet laureate coming up. And if you are around, where is that? Council?
Consent agenda.
It's in the consent agenda. And so when we get to that item, I think... We, twelve point three? We can pull it and discuss any questions, but greatly appreciate your willingness to come forward.
I'll yield my time, and I'll come back. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll be right back.
Yes, sir. I believe that's it for cards. I don't have any others. And seeing none, we'll go ahead and close public participation. Brings us to managers' matters. Item number 11. We've got five here. City manager, the floor is yours.
Thank you, mayor, and good evening, council. The first item for city managers' matters is a draft evaluation. Council would recall that per my contract, to be evaluated in six months, and again annually after that. And part of the contract entails an evaluation, a 360-degree performance evaluation, which is on the screen. This is a draft. Just wanted to get it to all the council members in advance of that process, which will not occur until February. And my goal is to get you to take a look at it. If you have any comments, any changes, any modifications, just to get it back to us. I'm working with our HR director, Natalie Watkins, on creating this. And the goal is to have a final product for you prior to that evaluation in February. So it's just something you can take your time with over the coming months, and we just look forward to hearing back from you on that. over the coming months, and we just look forward to hearing back from you on that. We have a personnel update. We are still looking for a city engineer. We've interviewed multiple candidates to date, and we have another viable candidate possibly in the hopper. We're having some discussions with them about possibly coming in for an interview. So, hopefully, we'll be able to do that. And we are looking for a utilities mechanic out at our public works facility. So, those are our only two openings at this time. We have a facilities update. You probably have heard by now and seen some social media, but our tennis courts are done. And we were very proud of how they look out there. We've received a lot of compliments from them. If you haven't gone out there to see them yet, you know, maybe you can in the next couple of days. We also have an update on the concession stand. This has been a work in progress, as you know. The Muriel, Muriel? Muriel? It's always a tough one. Has been replaced on this one wall side of the building. And we're gonna be doing some final painting upstairs on the floor. And the AC unit late this week or early next week should be connected and operational. And that should finalize the concession stand. The next item for update is the splash pad. We're very excited to say that if everything goes as planned, we will be opening this splash pad before the month of November is over. We have an electrician who needs to hook up our motors. They'll be coming out tomorrow for that. The equipment installers are then gonna come and they're gonna do some test runs on the equipment to make sure everything's fine. And once that's done, we'll be reaching out to the Department of Health to come and do its final inspection. And again, we're looking to have this open by the end of this month. Next is the Nancy Hansen project. You've probably seen that our roof is done. And we are now focusing on the interior. We've engaged an engineer for this process, and we're gonna be going over some design changes, some electrical work. And we need to take care of the stucco and the painting. That's actually gonna be the first order business, and we anticipate that happening on December 5. And finally, the playground equipment for San Piper Park has been ordered. And we don't know when. We'll take delivery of that. A lot of that is being custom-made for the city. So, but we'll keep the council posted on that. We know that a lot of folks have been anxious to see that new equipment out there. So, we're excited about that. Item 11.4 is the flash flood response guide. This is something that we put out here for council to review. This is also a draft document. We're taking any input that any council members may have. We've already received some input, and we'd like, you know, to engage you all to see if you have any more input to give. We're definitely looking to align it closer to some FEMA specifications that we will be reviewing in conjunction with our plans. And this is one of those, you know, flash flood. We can't always anticipate or prepare for that. And this is where we rely on our sheriff's office partners to help us with barricades and whatnot to block off roadways that are prone to flooding, so we can prevent vehicles traveling and causing a wake that could damage private property. And on that note, just to remind council, if you didn't, if you already heard, or if you don't know, it is now a violation of state law. If you drive through a flooded roadway, create a wake that floods private property. So, we'll hopefully engage sheriff's office on getting out there to help enforce that as well. I know that can make, would make a lot of citizens happy. The final item is the State of the City. And this is something that most of you are familiar with, maybe all of you. And it's a project that happens every year. Molly and her crew are working on this. And we have, you know, the itinerary or the schedule, if you will, posted for you. The first review edits deadlines in January 26. Final review by Wednesday, February 11. Insert the audit data and so forth, February 20, and publish before Monday, March 16, which is our typical timeline. And we want to offer to all council members the opportunity to get a new photo taken, if you would like. We will engage a photographer for their services. And we will set it up for the December council meeting to do that in conjunction or right before, however we work out those details. We'll keep council posted. And of course, if we don't have a new member installed by then, we can extend that into the next month because publication isn't until March. So, we have time to get all those pictures taken. And that concludes my matters unless any of you have any questions.
Counsel, any questions for our city manager? That I think is working really well. That's something our city manager proposed, I think, the very first meeting a few months back. And I appreciate you doing that to identify those, you know, priority, things that are in the community. My, I just have a comment on the deadlines for the last State of the City. That is very helpful. I've always been the slowest one. The city staff works really fast and gets it done, and it's high quality. And so, my goal for accountability this year is to be done ahead of schedule. And I just, I thank our city staff in the past who's been very patient with me. And this will be really helpful to guide me along the way. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Jackson?
I really wanted to speak to the City of Cape Canaveral Flash Flood Emergency Guide because I had taken that course for disaster preparedness in June of 2024. And this is an excellent job on this. So, for the sustainability and resiliency team that worked on this, and for all of the people that have contributed into this, because I know that just having the outline of what staff does and what, who to engage and what process and that kind of thing is so helpful for having a formal response plan of our own in the city outside of Brevard. We have our, in our local agreement with Brevard County in case of a disaster. So, we always have that. And that's what we've worked with in most cases, from what I understood. But this was a gap that is a huge piece brought into our city as far as having this and writing, so that we all understand that process. So, I wanted to thank you and thank the staff for working on this and getting this out.
Thank you.
Any other comments, counsel? Okay, that is great. We are now on to the consent agenda item number 12. If there's, we consent as the opportunity to approve 12.1 through 12.4. I think we've already referenced the 12.3, which is one that I think we, I would like to pull.
12.4 on...
In 12.4, 12.4, we've already removed.
The TPO? Okay.
Yep. So, we really have 12.1, 12.2, and I'll pull 12.3. So, if there's a desire to pass 12.1 and 12.2...
Mayor, if I may, 12.3 should be the poet laureate, I believe?
Yes. I think...
12.4 would be, no. Yeah, 12.4 would be the one you're pulling.
Yeah. So, I think we've already taken action.
Yes.
I think as far as consent, I will say, just on the schedule, if you have not, let's do this. I would like to actually pull 12.2 and 12.3. And 12.2 will go very quick from my side. I got something I wanna say. So, thank you. It really just leaves us with no benefit of a consent. And so, I think we could approve them one at a time.
Make a motion to approve the 12.1 approval of minutes.
I'll second that motion.
Got a motion by Councilmember Willis and a second by Mayor Pro Tem Jackson to approve item 12.1. Any further discussion? City clerk?
Sorry. Mayor Pro Tem Jackson?
Four.
Mayor Morrison?
This is hard to get used to.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Shoriak?
Four.
And Councilmember Willis?
Four.
Okay, item 12.1 passes 40. And we are now on to item 12.2. I just wanna emphasize on this one. The reason I wanted to briefly pull it is the schedule. Are we okay with this? And Councilmember Shoriak, we approve our schedule really at the beginning of the year. And we've identified the holidays, but it, those bolded dates for our monthly meetings, just make sure we take a look at those before approving this and that we're okay. And then the non-bolded dates are reserved for if, you know, we need to move a meeting or have another one. We're trying to keep our schedules clear around these dates.
Is that, I don't know how September 3rd falls next year compared to Labor Day?
It usually would be a Wednesday at that date.
For the first budget hearing?
Yeah.
Oh, please.
Yeah, what happens sometimes is obviously our budget hearings, our budget hearings can't conflict with the county or schools. And what's happening this year is just the way the calendar falls. It's kinda odd because when September 2nd, I believe, is the Tuesday. But by state rules, whatever the budget rules, you can't start that cycle with a budget hearing until at least September 3. So, City Clerk's office has made that adjustment. And so, that puts us on a Wednesday, if my memory serves me right, right? And that, so that keeps us in, it keeps it on a Wednesday. So, that keeps us in compliance.
Okay.
Oh, the Wednesday for the meeting? Is it?
September?
September 3? Right. So, okay. We just can't do it the same time as the county? Okay, okay. We're good then. So, that's why you can't have a meeting prior to September 3. So, it's gonna fall on, yeah, I can't, my screen's not up, so I can't see it. Yeah. Okay, that's fine.
Thank you.
So, that keeps us in compliance. And if you recall in previous years, if something ever changed with the county or the school, whatever, in June, we come back to you and say, hey, there was a change. We're gonna have to adjust the schedule. Well, that may not happen this year. But if it does, that's when we usually do it, in June. Okay?
Thank you. Yes, September 3, I got, is a Thursday.
Okay, it's a Thursday.
We're a day off, but that's okay. I think that makes sense. And I appreciate the agenda cutoffs going in there as dates as well. So, just that first meeting, if we want something on the January 20 agenda, that January 7 is the day we need to have those submitted, and then it'll be posted. It's pretty much two weeks prior, so.
That's good.
That's all good. I'm good with this schedule. Councilmember, or Mayor Pro Tem Jackson, was there anything else?
No, I would just wanted to make sure, you know, I wasn't sure how Labor Day fell. So, I was trying to make sure.
It is, it turns, it happens, the September month happens in a different time.
Right. So, I'm good with it.
No, he's got that little twist.
Okay.
Okay.
Looking for a motion to adopt?
Make a motion to adopt calendar item 12.2. Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Willis, a second by Councilmember Shoriak. Any further discussion? City clerk?
Four.
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 Item 12.2 passes 40, which now brings us to item 12.3, which is a resolution 2025-20 for the City of Cape Canaveral Honorary Poet Laureate Appointment. Mr. Luke Azalea Heron, thank you so much for coming forward. That might need to be my first phonetics question there on pronunciation. But if needed, we'll make sure to let you know, counsel. Any questions for the candidate?
I have some questions for him. If he wouldn't mind going to...
Yes, please come forward. Thank you.
Hi, Luke. Welcome.
Hi.
Thank you for your interest in this. Okay. What have you done to develop a relationship with editors and journalists with the New York Times?
So, when I was spending time in Minnesota, when I was living there for a little bit, I went to a camp called Storytelling. And it was by a school, sponsored by a school called the University of St. Thomas. And they had many speakers there, guest speakers from places like MinPost, which is basically New York Post but for Minnesota. And then also, they had speakers from the New York Times. So, I got to learn a bunch of new perspectives and different techniques of writing, whether it's poetic or freeform, and expand on those. Yeah.
So, but specifically with the New York Times?
Yes, ma'am.
You said, you have in your bio that you've developed a relationship with editors and journalists there? With there?
Yes, ma'am.
So, what, was that through that?
Actually, not only that. Sorry, did I interrupt you? It wasn't only through that. On LinkedIn, I have about 500 connections. And one of the things I did before I started making connections with editors at the New York Times is I would send in a connection invite to pretty much every single one at the New York Times. And then I would expand on questions and kind of developing relationships on mentorship, based on mentorship. And there's a couple of people I've done that with, including a man by the name of Ernesto Lodonio. He's been very helpful to me in my writing journey.
Okay. So, and I saw in your work?
Yes, ma'am.
That you have, that you haven't been published with them yet. Okay? And that was in your, your...
Shapeshifter.
Shapeshifter goals, right? So, and I'm asking this for a reason.
Yes, ma'am.
So, if you'll bear with me. Okay, you're getting ready to come to work or potentially work with the City of Cape Canaveral. And you have your goals in there to develop and help our community with, you know, working with poetry and those types of things and representing our community. The samples I'm seeing, I don't have any samples that reflect our community as far as the nature or any of those things. Do you have any of that type of work?
I'm sorry, do you mind repeating it?
Sure. I'm kind of rolling around there with it. Okay, so with your bio?
Okay.
You have, I love your work. I had literally done like masterpieces of literature and all of that in college myself. So, I like literary stuff. Your examples that you gave us aren't really, they're not like a community, any type of community work, whether it's environment or any of those things or anything like that. Do you have any of that type of sample work?
I would say poetry in itself is a community. The idea of diversity and not having any bounds is the whole point of poetry. So, whether you're talking about writing poetry on the beach, which is pretty much the prime of Cape Canaveral, my favorite part at least, that's something I'm definitely gonna hit on. And one of the ways I'm gonna do that as poet laureate, if I'm lucky enough to get the honor, would be through beach walks, through advertising with the city. I would love to lead a beach walk. And during the beach walk, we all pick up items, whether it's a seashell, sea glass, et cetera. And we just write short poems about them. So, kind of having community outreach and expanding that lens and starting to write poems about the community as opposed to just what you're talking about right now.
Okay. And that's why, well, this is why I'm asking. You've got it in your bio. My intention is to bridge generations with poetry and promote the Cape Canaveral community.
Yes, ma'am.
So, as I look at the, at your sample work, I see great work. You're talented. I don't necessarily draw this to our community as far as Cape Canaveral. And as a poet laureate, you would be representing the city.
100%.
So, that's why I was asking, do you have any of that type of work, nature, you know, any of that stuff?
I absolutely do have stuff related to nature.
Okay, see.
Related to the beach.
And that's what I'd like to see a sample?
If you'd like me to recite one now, I'm... If you'd like me to recite one now, I'm totally willing to.
I would like to see some samples of that.
Can I pull one up right now? Would that be okay?
As long as.
I, I think to recite a poem?
Yeah, sure.
Well, depending on the time, we've got some.
Probably about a minute and a half.
Counsel, I don't have a problem with hearing anything you'd like to share with us, so. And as he's getting prepared.
As I would assume many people's favorite time is. And one of the poems I've written is about taking summer for granted. And I think that really connects to Cape Canaveral. But the best part about that is that being in Florida really doesn't restrict summer. It's warm year round. So I wrote this from a perspective when I was in Minnesota, and it really has, it really reflect why I enjoy Florida enough. So I'm going to pull it out.
Luke, I don't want to put you on the spot.
I got you, I, I know we're in a rush, I got you guys.
Okay. But I would like to see some of that type of work in addition to the samples that you provided us, is what my point was.
This summer's called Taking Summer, or this poem's called Taking Summer for Granted. It goes, "I feel unappreciated when it comes to you. I feel as though nothing I do makes you happy. I cook for you. I wash your clothes for you. I do everything for you. Do you appreciate that? No." A 2008 poem by Precious is all that comes to mind when I imagine you thinking of me because the other day, the cat's paw reminded me of my mistakes, of society's mistakes. Because maybe I hinted, but I failed to appreciate you. I failed to become enamored by your beauty, you're gone, and now there's nothing left to treasure. But while the breeze is singing loud, I'm starting to become obsessed, man, your warmth. Damn, it was like a mother's hug the night of a breakup, and I miss you only now, when I can no longer see scattered hues after the bedtime of children. Because, Lord, the blood orange, rose red and lemon peeled yellow of the night sky finally sang to me so loudly, walks across a bridge with the sun on my eyes. Long days meant to be filled with what only the heart can imagine, pretty much everything but stay inside to write poems. So no, I did not leave because writing and poetry is the place where I feel most safe. It's the place where my friends feel most safe. And I feel that, and I see that to be more valuable than your warm embrace because in an era of inauthenticity, I'm connected to a community I don't have. I'm given grace from a pen. I'm given heart. I'm given friendship. My pen even teases me for my braille-like handwriting. Oh, and my notebook, we go a long way back. Each page represents a story, each page gives me the platform to impact people, people like me. Nonetheless, you and your 5:00 AM dawns continue to fade like a LeBron jumper from the left hash. So I'll make a vow. Like a good parent, I'll promise to adore you in my writing utensils equally when June arrives. But as this summer ends, I remember making the same vow the last time I said, "Summer's over." Thank you.
Thank you for sharing that. It takes a, a lot of courage and I love your energy. I think you're clearly passionate about this form of art.
And I know I took up some time, but I.
No, that's okay, we allowed.
Thank you. I am.
I just want to say that I think what counsel, or Mayor Pro Tim Jackson is saying is, do you, and if you do not, we want to, I would like to get to know you a little bit better because this is a, a position that I think, you know, you can do some really good stuff for the city. I can clearly see your heart is in it.
Yes.
And I, I don't know, because I, when I go through, I see some of the different perspectives in here, but perhaps when you have more time, we could circle back and get some, look at some other pieces that you have for us and bring us.
Sure.
Maybe the December meeting to, to, to understand a little bit more about what you want to do.
Certainly. I was only provided five slots to be able to enter poetry. One of the things, one of the areas I hit on for the community, and I would like to make this clear, is the poem that's written named The Pharmacist Grandmother. It's to my knowledge that a lot of people of the Cape Canaveral community happen to be of older age. And immersing myself within that community and showing what people who have more insight to give than I do mean to me was a big part of why I put that poem in there. So that's kind of how I related it to the city.
That was the first poem?
Yeah.
Okay, that's, that's helpful.
So that, that's definitely how I connected that to the City of Cape Canaveral. And I was sent to you guys by the Parks and Rec Board, they sent me through, they were nice enough to do that.
That's awesome. Nomination is appreciated. Councilmember, or Mayor Pro Tim Jackson, I'll get it right. I, I kind of interjected there, but I think you had the floor.
Yep. I was, and, and I can see where your first point jiffy.
Yes, ma'am.
Definitely did this because I read through all of them. You know, I, I would like to, I, I'm thinking like along the lines you or Mayor Morrison is, I'd like to see a little bit more of your work. But also, if you could, give me, not tonight, but if we come and revisit this in December.
Next thing, I'd love to bring the poems in here.
And I would love to know, I would love to see what your vision is for how to, what your vision is for what you would do in this spot.
I can certainly answer that.
Okay.
I actually gave a lot of thought to this because I was interviewed by the last board, so I wasn't sure what was going on today. I'd like to, to look into outreach and the way I want to do that is by connecting with not just people my age, but people older and kind of bridging that gap. The best poetry transcends anything that is argumentative. It unites. And when I say that, what I mean, I'm sorry, what was the question again? I apologize.
You're fine.
I just, I wasn't sure, I wasn't given an agenda, so I wasn't sure what to expect. I was expecting an interview and I prepared for it.
Well, exactly. And, and Luke, this is why I'm, I'm wanting this to know what, what your plan would be once we get you on us, you know, if, if that is the decision that's made. How are you going to, and it's not just interact with the community because you've already put in here about reaching out to the New York Times and things like that. And we are very specific on, right now we are, about how we're outreaching to the, to the media.
Okay.
And things of that nature. So I think if I understood your plan more once you started, you know, what kind, and here comes Molly to help, to help me.
The poet, poet laureate is only an honorary position. He will work with staff on all programming and outreach to the media and he will not be posting on behalf of the city or anything like that. That's still done by staff.
That's not saying I was.
He's, he's, he's the writer and he's the face of the poet laureate. And the program summary is outlined there, but everything that he does will be done in conjunction with staff because he does not have the authority to do that.
Okay. Because, you know, we're, right now, boy, if we advertise Cape Canaveral in some places, we're going to get a mad brush of people moving. And boy, that's, that could be a precarious situation with our plans and stuff.
Yeah, he'll, he'll follow staff's lead.
Okay.
Again, I mean, I would absolutely love to start now. I, I've been planning on this, not for months, but for years. This has been a goal of mine. If you guys nominate me, I would become the youngest poet laureate in a district's history. So really looking forward to the opportunity, if it's given to me. And I can't wait to get to work, whether that's coming to every single council meeting, making sure that I involve my guys, I involve myself with you guys. Of course, I won't take any steps without the staff's go ahead.
Thank you. Anything else, Mayor Jackson? Counsel, any questions here?
Yes, Luke? How long does it normally take you to write a poem?
Thank you. I have, that's a fun question, actually. So sometimes it'll go all day. I'll immerse myself into it all day, maybe take a little bit of a break, but I'm really into it. Sometimes it'll take 30 seconds legitimately.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
What if, what if we asked Luke to, with Molly's assistance, to identify some part of Cape Canaveral and bring back a poem in December?
I have no, I, I am excited about, and I think what we're talking about is what the poet laureate in the past has been. This council, I think, is willing to, I think, match your energy and with our city staff's support there. That would be helpful to me, Councilmember Willis, to.
I, I think just to try to capture the essence of Cape Canaveral. We, we have the space program, we have the cruise ships, we have beautiful beaches, we have very friendly people, we have interesting lifestyle, we have pickleball.
I'm a tennis player.
Okay, therein, there is a conundrum. So I think if he could bring back something that is focused on Cape Canaveral. And how we see Cape Canaveral, maybe versus how outside of Cape Canaveral sees us. And let's, let's hear that.
That works. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Shoriat, anything? This is, this is great, we appreciate you. Yes, Molly?
So I'll bring back an agenda item for the December meeting so that he'll have an opportunity to share his poetry.
If that's okay, I think that would be really great.
Depends on what your vote is right now.
I support that.
I would make a motion to bring it back with an, with a specific example for us to digest, if you don't mind.
And I'll second the motion.
Got a motion by Councilmember Willis, a second by Mayor Pro Tim Jackson. Any further discussion? City Clerk?
Mayor Pro Tim Jackson?
Four.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Shoriat?
Four.
And Councilmember Willis?
Four.
Motion passes 40. Thank you again, we appreciate you.
Thank you, Luke.
Okay, so that was really it, the end of the consent, because we made a decision on item 12.4 earlier in the agenda, which brings us to item 13, item for action. 13.1 is a resolution 202521 declaring a vacancy on the city council. Yes, our city attorney to help us with the overview here, this isn't, I've never been here before, so appreciate all your work on this matter.
Thank you, Mayor. At the qualifying period for the, for the previous general election, just one candidate qualified for two open seats, that was Mr. Shoriat. So as a result, Mr. Shoriat was elected, you know, based on, based on that fact. So now that the new council has taken office and the new council is situated, there is now a vacancy effective this evening on, on the city council. There are only four of you, the charter requires five seats. The proposed resolution is for purposes of declaring the vacancy. So where the council would acknowledge that the vacancy is now, has now been created. Under the charter that sets a clock for the city council, it's a 90-day clock in which the city council has an opportunity to appoint one qualified candidate to serve on the city council as an appointed councilperson until the next general election, which is November of 2026. So this resolution formally recognizes and declares the vacancy and then starts the, the clock running, 90-day clock for the city council to make an appointment until the November 3rd, 2026 election. Presuming this resolution passes, the council declares the vacancy. The second part of this agenda is asking direction from the city council on how they want to go about filling this appointment. Two approaches are presented for your consideration. One is a non-structured approach, which is basically an ad hoc approach. The second approach is a more structured approach where the city council would establish a qualifying period, so to speak, where qualified applicants could submit applications for the city council to review before making the appointment. So first item of business is approve the resolution. Second item of business is to give the staff direction on how you want to go about filling this vacancy. Mayor?
Thank you, city attorney. Let's take them, I think, one at a time. Declaring the vacancy is step one. This, the, the latter on direction, I think, is going to be a little bit more conversation. Counsel, it's pretty straightforward, I think we just need to formally declare that we have a vacancy and that resolution is 202521.
I'll make a motion to pass the resolution 2025-21.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Willis, a second by Mayor Pro Tim Jackson to pass resolution 202521. Any further discussion on this one? On the motion? City Clerk?
Mayor Pro Tim Jackson?
Four.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Shoriat?
Four.
And Councilmember Willis?
Four.
Okay, resolution 202521 passes 40. Vacancy is formally declared. We now are on to item 13.2, the second part of what our city attorney explained, which is the appointment of a qualified candidate to fill the vacancy. A second here, and. Okay, so on the agenda, really the options that are in front of us, thank you here, item one and two. The nomination by charter, if I understand my first question, has to be up until the next election. That's a charter thing, not, we cannot appoint, even though there's three years really.
Right.
In the vacancy, but it cannot go beyond an election.
Yeah, the council has appointment authority, but only, that appointee would only serve until the next general election, which is November 3rd, 2026. And during the November 3rd, 2026 election, there would be in a, a special election, so to speak, for the remaining two-year balance of the term for that seat.
Okay. Counsel? Thank you.
Now, I have one question.
Yes, Mayor Pro Tim Jackson?
On the qualifying, I was reading through this, of course, you know how I am, the, the less structured and structured approach. When we qualified, when you have, you know, during the election cycle, one of those pieces of qualifying was having a bank account, which would not be applicable for this. So is that process modified for whatever candidates that we may?
Yeah, it does, there's no, there's no need for a bank account, right? There's no, there's no need for a bank account, right?
Right. Since we're appointing?
For contributions and expenditure. So, you know, that, that issue can just be dispensed with.
Okay.
What doesn't get dispensed with is the fact that the city has an election code which requires qualification statement on domicile to be executed. There's also some state statutory, you know, documents that would have to be submitted and, and the, and the qualifying application gets submitted with the background information. So, you know, the city, city council can make an informed decision. I know it's a small community, but nonetheless, that documentation, you know, should be submitted, you know, for, for review and completeness before the city council makes an, an appointment.
And did we have anyone, and this was for the city clerk, did we have anyone that, that provided the documentation that was needed with, I mean, bank account doesn't matter, but during the qualification, the election qualification period?
I mean, this last election, yes.
Okay, how many people did we have?
One.
One. Okay, so, we've had one person that attempted.
One person that, my, my understanding, one person attempted and qualified, and he's now on the city council at the end there.
Okay.
No one, no one else, no one else qualified.
No one else submitted?
Yeah.
Well, I understand they didn't qualify, but what I'm wondering is, did anyone submit paper? And the reason I'm asking this is I had such a hard time setting up my bank account. That's where I'm going with this. So, I literally, when I ran both times, I, it took me some time to get the bank account set up here locally. And the last time, they were working on the computer systems, and it took me like three days. So, I was, since that's not a requirement, I was wondering if anyone had gone through the process, everything else, except for that, because they had me come in and fill it all out. And then, you know, I had to go get my bank account and bring that information back. So, no one got through the filling it all out part? Okay, that's what my question was.
Thank you. And I think, I mean, I remember the day. It was, we were all at the League of Cities on noon, and I heard, I think there was other interested people who inquired about it, and that was one other person other than Mr. Shoryak at the time?
I'd say two or three.
Okay.
By telephone calls and one in person.
Thank you.
Didn't request the paperwork.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tim Jackson?
Did we have any that picked up the binder?
No.
No.
Councilmember Willis?
Yeah, I would be in favor of a structured approach on the application process. Think we should give staff the, the ability to do the legwork for us. And we would have a better chance of knowing a little bit more about people that we want to consider, because it may be somebody none of us know currently. I'm sure we all have people we wish would apply, but as we, we've seen, we only had one. And not, no, nothing, nothing against Tom, but, I mean, we only had one person. So, there's apparently apathy out there. So, I would, I would like to see a structured approach, and let's see what we can uncover.
Thank you. Councilmember Shoryak, do you have any comments on this at this time?
I, I agree with Councilmember Willis that, on the structured approach, I think it'll be more transparent for us and know more about who's applying for it. And maybe, I, I'm not sure, where does it get publicized that we have an opening? Is it just on our Facebook page or the city's website?
The website.
Website, newsletter, bulletin board, social media, et cetera?
And the notice board outside, that kind of thing, yes.
Yeah, I think...
You put it on the sign on the road out there with the, the, the message sign?
The, I guess, not knowing, I know one of the candidates, I think, is here tonight, someone who was interested, but they did not, obviously, we had one that qualified to submit. You know, who the other ones are, I, I don't know. But I can say that, just to be direct, that individual, I think, is extremely qualified, and I would fully support not wasting any time in appointing them. That comes with the assumption, like Mayor Pro Tim Jackson, if they would be willing to, to do that. And so, i-if that's the case, I'm, I'm fine with, with that. And now clarifying, it's not for a full three years, it's, it's just for one year.
And I'm in favor of nominating a candidate in the less structured approach. And the reason being is that, I mean, during the qualifying period, you do, you know, we didn't, we might have had people that called, but what I had seen when I ran two election cycles is people were up here getting the binder. I mean, they were coming up here and trying to get the paperwork. And so, to me, a phone call may not really indicate that much interest, because, and this is, and I will say this, too, this is the first year, in my awareness at all, that we had no election, that we have a vacancy to fill in this city. Before, when we would go through our election processes, we would have five candidates trying for two seats or five candidates trying for three seats. So, as I look at that, you know, if, if there's someone that's here that wants to be on council, I think we should consider that. Just because what has happened is not normal for our city. I was really fairly shocked that we didn't have any candidates. I'm still fairly shocked over that. So, because that's, that's not how it worked two times I've ran. I mean, we have more than, more than enough, so, to make a choi, for voters to make a choice. So, since it is a year appointment, and then that would put that person running with Councilmember Willis and I next year, they get to run with us. You know, it's a year appointment, it fills the need, and that way, we can continue on with the business of the council. Because the other, the structured application process, to me, looks like we're almost doing another election cycle with some of the steps to it.
Yeah, and I think if the candidate is, would like to come forward, Ms. King, if, if you don't mind, obviously, during elections, we communicate, residents call, they come, hey, I'm interested, and I think you had expressed an interest. And the confusion, what I didn't know was about the other individuals, and our city clerk helped. It was my understanding that the deadline was at noon as opposed to what you believe to be five P.M. And with the bank account, that would, that was an issue.
Yeah. Okay, first of all, I did apply and qualify to run in twenty twenty. And for personal reasons, I had to step down from that. But I've never lost my interest in what's happening in the city. I've paid attention to most of the issues and have an opinion about them. But furthermore, I want to know every aspect of them, every facet. I want to know everybody's side and help deliberate on it. When I found out that there was nobody running, and my husband and I both worked the polls, and we had no election to work at, it was just really strange. So, I thought, you know, maybe this is the time for me to do this again and try it again. So, I reached out to our city clerk, Ms. Coulson, and I contacted her, and she said, okay, you've got to, you know, she told me what I needed to do. So, I ran down to the bank first thing, tried to open up an account, and of course, I didn't have the proper paperwork, so I had to come back to City Hall to get it. And I walked in, and she met me, and she, I remember, you just looked so downhearted about it. I felt terrible. It was like, she said, the don't, the deadline is at noon. I said, it's not at five? No, it's at noon. And this was about, what, ten after twelve? Fifteen minutes after twelve? So, I was not eligible in that regard. I was disappointed, but, I mean, you know, sometimes these things happen. But the fact that there wasn't anybody that was raising their hand and saying, I want to do it, I'll do it, I thought, well, maybe, maybe this is a God thing, I don't know, but maybe this is where I'm supposed to be. I have a desire for it, and I think I have, I think I'm qualified for it. And I, anyway, that's, that's my, my position on it. This is my city. I love this city. I've lived here since nineteen ninety-two. And I see the direction that it's taking. Some of it's wonderful, some of it not. And I want to be part of the decision-making process to guide our city into the future that's going to be beneficial for everybody. So, anyway, any questions?
For me, not, not at this time. We might have some in a little bit.
Okay.
And so, maybe stay close.
Okay.
But I would say that, that there, that my, my questions about the total inbound calls or inquiries was to figure out just that, because, is that if there were multiple people, that you were the only one, with an exception of Mr. Shoryak, in my opinion, that physically was, come down and tried to pursue it. Fortunately, it passed the deadline. And I think that in itself, if we are going to go through a structured application process, now, that opportunity was there at that time, and Andrea was the, the second one who, who showed a desire. And there's people that will get involved just because it's an appointment and there's no election involved. And what I think that's going to do is bring in more work on our city staff to advertise. It's going to have a lot of, of people who were not here that day pursuing it. And so, I think that speaks volumes that your intent to run had just met four hours, five hours short. And, but no one else, with an exception of maybe some phone call inquiries, if I understand, had been, went to that level. And so, that speaks volumes to me on your, on your will and motive to, to step out and do it. And so, thank you for sharing that with us. Counsel, do we have any questions? For Andrea?
I have one.
Yes, Mayor Pro Tim?
So, Andrea, I remember you had involvement at NASA, and as we move forward in the space race that we're in, we're, you know, an integral part of that as the city of Cape Canaveral. Would you tell me about your NASA experience?
I'm going to take you back just a, a step even back further. When I was hired by WESH TV to cover Brevard County, I thought, the news director told me Broward County. And I came here to Cape Canaveral, I didn't have a clue. I thought it was Broward, and it was Brevard. I thought, wow, okay. So, I started covering the county. And I was, I was actually backup to the prime reporter who was covering Kennedy Space Center and all the activity there. So, I was covering what was going on here in the community, in the county, countywide. There was a county administrator who was doing unethical things. And I had him on video and on tape admitting these things. I got back to the studio, which is just down the street here, to edit my piece for the six o'clock news, and I was told to call the news director immediately. So, I did. And the news director told me at the time, we can't run your piece. I asked him why. He said, because we have to be able to get along with these people. God's, God's truth. That really opened my eyes to how the news is covered. I stayed with it for another, maybe under a year. And then, I had the opportunity to work on somebody's campaign for county commissioner, District Juan Titusville. And I, I helped him out. I ran his campaign day to day, and subsequently, he won. He took on, he, he, he got the position. He asked me to join him as his legislative assistant. But at the same time, I had made friends with people that worked out at the public affairs press site, NASA. And there was an opening there. And they told me, you know, you should probably apply for that. We've told our boss about you, and he's interested. So, I applied, and I got the job, working as a public affairs officer for NASA. And I was there for four years during the time that the Challenger blew up. In fact, I was in launch control at the time, doing launch commentary. And that was quite an experience, I will tell you, to be right there and experiencing all of that. After that happened, they asked me if I would work on the, the investigation. It was called the fifty-one L, Analysis and Design Investigation, as a scribe, memorializing these meetings. So, I would sit in on these meetings and, and pay attention and write, okay. I tell you all of this because I was intimately involved at NASA. I worked for USBI, United Space Boosters, who was implicated in the, the explosion because of the O-rings that were in the solid rocket boosters. And I stayed with them for a while longer. I stayed with them for a while, and we returned to flight, and I stayed, I stayed along with them. At, at some point, things wound down, and there were a lot of layoffs out there, a lot of shrinkage, because we weren't, you know, we just weren't zooming like we had been in the early days. So, I left NASA, started my own business here in Cape Canaveral, my husband and I both. We started a public relations and media relations firm, and we did that for about, I don't know, four years, I guess. And then I took a retirement. I just decided to retire. And it was during that time that I got back into looking at local government and what was happening here. I got involved with the Tea Party. I got involved with political action committees. I was back into the swing of things, but on a national level. And I kept hearing this voice in my head saying, you know, all politics is local, all politics is local. And when I took a look around me and I saw what was happening to Cape Canaveral, I just thought, you know, I need to have my finger in this. Somehow or other, I need to be involved. And so, that's when I took out the application in twenty twenty to run for council. But again, as I said, for personal reasons, I had to, I had to pull back. But I have time now. I'm working part-time out at the port for Cruise Line. And I'm seeing things at the port that are really alarming, but that's a whole other thing. And so, I, I just, we have to protect this little city of ours. We are getting eaten alive by the corporate mindset at Port Canaveral. And we've got a space program that we, we're looking at the starship coming in, and how are we going to cope with that? I want to be part of the decision-making that guides us through that. And for a year, I mean, I thought, well, you know, for a year, if I, if I do a good job, people will recognize that, and I can run for election and maybe get elected and, and fill a thir, a three-year term. So, anyway, does that answer your question, Ms. Jackson?
Yes, thank you.
It was kind of a long dissertation, but now you know.
Well, I think what you ended is the willingness to run is what separated you from everyone else. Councilmember Shoryak, he was qualified. He knew that an election could happen. And I think that your desire in twenty twenty, your recent desire met by a few hours earlier, is what will separate you from any other candidate that we would see in a structured application process, with an exception of a formally elected... application process, with an exception of a formally elected council member. Councilmember Jax, or Davis, or councilmember, Mayor Potem, former Kellam, both qualified candidates, right? They, they were elected by the people. And, and so shy of that, which I don't think we keep up with a lot of them, right now, we don't have any former who has shown an interest. But, but you were in second place, for lack of better words. You were right there, obviously didn't meet the cut. And I think to go with anyone else beyond that is more of an opportunist, who is seeking something that maybe doesn't go beyond 20, 25 or 6, excuse me. And so thank you for, for sharing that. Like I said, during election times, this was the first year usually people contact, hey, what's going on? I'm, I'm thinking about it. I didn't have anything, with an exception of hearing you and, and Mr. Shorijak showing an interest. And so there could be some other people, but I don't think they, they took that step. They was considering and they weren't willing. I hope that makes sense to, and my concern with the structured process is that we can move now. I'm confident that, from what I've observed, is this was the person who was pursuing it and willing to do it for the right reasons. And for those reasons, I think we should, assuming Andrea is still willing, and I should, if you've said it, I may be clarifying, you are still willing.
Andrea Yen?
You are still willing.
Yes.
I, I would like to consider moving as quickly as possible on this. And I know that if qualifying paperwork, if that packet is provided and submitted without financial forms, I don't know if we, as a council, would have to waive that, right? Because qualified. But city attorney, could you help understand the timeline of what an appointment and a swearing-in would look like as far as today? Could we get this done? I guess what would be the fastest possible that we could move is my question.
Well, I mean, it's a, it's a political appointment. And the, the person that, that you appoint needs to meet the qualifications under the charter for residency. I know Ms. King has been a longstanding resident of Cape Canaveral, you know, but there are paperwork, you have to fill out the qualifying statement, there's going to be a financial form that's going to be, have to be submitted, right with the state, all that paperwork. You know, it's, again, it's a political appointment. You know, typically you would get all this paperwork in order before you would make an appointment, but, you know, the council, the council's prerogative. You know, if you were to require her to submit all the paperwork, then the council can make the appointment thereafter, either at a meeting in December or, or in, you know, in another way, right? A special meeting? It's up to the council.
Technically, could we appoint tonight?
Like I said, it's a political appointment and, you know, to, she's very known in the community. You know, it's how much comfort does the council have on, on due diligence before making the appointment? I mean, it's, it's, you, it's your decision. You have the council, I guess, presume if you want to proceed with an appointment tonight, the paperwork would then, yeah, then, then there's the swearing-in, of course, and then the paperwork would have to be completed, you know? What's the cart before the horse or the horse before the cart? I'll leave that to you.
Appoint contingent upon submitting the paperwork in a certain amount of time and then when that paperwork comes in, she could be duly sworn in at a future meeting theoretically. Just like legally, there's no issues that I'm hearing with that. Were you going to say something?
Well, I, I was just going to say, I came by the city hall this afternoon to get the paperwork. It wasn't ready yet. Ms. Coulson was busy and Amanda, I think it was, said that they'd have it for me tomorrow afternoon. And I also brought my paperwork from 2020 that I've already filled out, so I can kind of, you know, not use it, but refer to it. It's not unfamiliar to me, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay.
And had you not been the one, there's no other process, in my opinion, other than the structured application process, with an exception of the people that inquired, but there's a big difference in the two. The one that moved their feet to go and to pursue it and, and the, and your willingness in the past. And so, counsel, I mean, it is my, I think it is in the best interest of the city of Cape Canaveral that we do not open up the struck, the process of a new qualifying period with new candidates for the remaining term. I have enough confidence. And the involvement of Andrea in all of our meetings has shown, there's been a few residents that have been steady, but there's really no comparison and you're, while you may not always be here, you've got a, a finger on what's going on, on the pulse. And I think, you know, as far as my comfort level, I am, I believe you are fully qualified and to be verified in submitting, that I know on the residency, clearly. And so thank you for your willingness to do this.
It would be my pleasure and my honor.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Shall I be seated?
You certainly can.
May I ask one question?
Oh, yes.
Ms. King?
Yes.
Would your personal reasons for dropping out in 2020? Could, could they?
Could they come up again?
Reoccur?
No, no. No.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I still want to have a structured approach. After seeing the things that have happened in other municipalities in Brevard County, I would like to fully vet anybody we bring on.
What's happened? Maybe I'm out of the news from?
Well, you can look at other municipalities around.
I do.
Yeah.
But what's happened that you're concerned about?
Well, I mean, you have Palm Bay, you have Melbourne, you have a lot of different issues. I just would like to have people vetted to the extreme, if possible. And we don't know who might have been wanting to call at noon and was, again, five hours late. Well, there's, there's a lot we don't know.
I know enough.
And I think we need to put it out there to let anybody that might be interested have the opportunity to apply.
Thank you for your comments. I disagree respectfully. And I think Ms. King is beyond qualified and the vetting process is clear. You know, the, as long as the paperwork's submitted, I think that outlines and governs qualified. If we're talking about vetting, like asking questions and interviewing, Ms. Councilmember Shorijak sits beside us today by moving his feet, went in, he met the deadline, and I'm just going, who came the next closest to that? That paired up with my knowledge and your involvement is enough. Are there any other questions?
Can I, can I make a, a comment to Councilman Willis? Councilman Willis, you may remember when you ran for the first time, I contributed to your campaign. It wasn't a lot of money, but it was enough. And I didn't know much about you. But I took you at your word and I had some friends that were with me who spoke for you. And so I contributed to your campaign. I didn't do a hard vet on you. I trusted you. And I would hope that you would do the same for me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Andrea? This is new for us too, Tom. It is.
Yeah, I, I know I agreed with the structured approach. I didn't realize we had someone, another candidate in the wings who was actually interested in it.
The second part is what I, I needed to confirm is they were willing to do it and interested.
Okay. So I mean, I have no problem just with nominating and however we go about the process.
Thank you. Mayor Potem, anything else?
No, I mean, I still believe that if people were truly interested, I mean, so we would have had an election. And so in order for us to move forward, I think that the less structured and going ahead and appointing the one that came in that has qualified twice trying to do, or started qualification this time and has qualified before, it shows the initiative that they want to serve on council. So for me, I don't have a problem with giving someone that opportunity because we don't have anyone else even here speaking up saying they want to do that.
I agree.
And we knew that we have an opening. So if anyone was interested, wouldn't they be here?
I think they are.
Yeah.
To your point, I agree.
It's, it's unprecedented, like I said earlier, that we didn't have an election. I'm just still floored by that, because that's not the way it's ever gone in the city of Cape Canaveral. We've always had more candidates than we've had openings on council. So I say we, I say we take the person that's interested enough to, and wants, and wants to do the job.
How much time would you need to submit the paperwork?
Well, if the city clerk has it ready for me tomorrow.
I should have asked that first. Sorry. Go ahead. I apologize.
Well, a, a day or two, really, because I already have it filled out from when I applied, when I tried to qualify in 2020. And not much has changed since then. So I'm just going to go back and review what I did before, and I can fill out this one and if there are any changes, I'll add them to it.
Thank you. City Clerk's office, is this something you could have ready?
No, not ready, no. Because didn't know which approach he was going to take, whether it's the less structured or the structured application process. However, there has been a change since 2020, so.
Oh, in the forms? Yeah, that's fine.
Yes. That's the state level and, you know, just have to make sure that we give you the most current. And so it won't be available tomorrow.
It won't be available tomorrow?
No.
Okay. Can you give me an idea of when they will be?
I'll have to contact you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I think that if we're able to get those, a couple of days for you, when our city clerk's office is able to get those ready, thank you for that. We would just figure a few days at most after. It would be my recommendation that we, as we go with the less structured approach, which is less involvement and work, we would appoint tonight contingent upon submitting the paperwork before, I would say, 10 days would be ideal. And then we should, I think, call a special meeting and have a swearing-in for Ms. King, assuming all that comes in, if that is okay and legal with our city attorney. And I can.
The city council can make the, the mic's off. I mean, the city council can make the appointment subject to completion of all the required forms.
Okay.
And, and assuming, you know, all of the paperwork is, you know, filled out. It's not technically necessary for another special council meeting for the swearing-in, unless the council wants to have a ceremony. I mean, you know, the, you could make the appointment contingent upon completing all the paperwork. If the paperwork is in order on its face, then, you know, she can be sworn in.
And when would that swearing-in happen?
Assuming all the paperwork is completed.
Would it happen at a meeting?
It does not. My point was, it does not technically have to be at a city council meeting if the council makes the appointment contingent upon all the paperwork being submitted.
Well, I mean, it would be a big, if she wanted to, I just thought from the ceremonial, like Councilmember Shorijak tonight, if she wanted to be here, that the, obviously the December meeting is their Tuesday. We could hold a ceremonial event at that meeting. I think my issue would be, well, that to me is fine. What it is, is the time that goes by, if we call a meeting, we have four. As soon as we're able to have five participating, that's going to be best. And so I don't have an issue if this council be okay with appointing contingent on submitting the paperwork. And if Andrea was comfortable, she would be sworn in. It sounds like by our city attorney, we not, may not be here, but it could be done.
That's fine. I'm sorry.
And then if we wanted to have a ceremonial swearing-in, perhaps, we could. So just trying to honor the position. I, I think that's the best path forward. And Councilmember Shorijak?
I agree with you.
You have no issue?
No.
Okay. All right, well, looking, let's do this. Make a motion to, Mayor Potem Jackson, do you want to make the motion contingent?
Sure, I can. I'll make the motion, I'll make a motion to appoint Andrea Shay King as our council member for one year, contingent upon the qualification paperwork being completed within how long? 10 days, you said?
Yes.
10 days.
Second.
Got a motion by Mayor Potem Jackson and a second by Councilmember Shorijak. Is that motion clear, city clerk's office? Do we need to restate and our city attorney? I think, obviously, if there's any issue with that motion, I know she said one year. I think that's okay.
Until the next, the, yeah. Sorry. Until the next general election.
Yeah, until the next election cycle.
Approximately one year away.
Right. Do we need to restate it or clarify anything? Good, thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Councilmember Willis?
Nope.
Councilmember Shorijak?
No.
Mayor Potem Jackson?
No.
City manager, are there any logistical administrative things that are concerned with this?
No concerns, mayor. We'll just get the clerk's office to start working with the candidate and get this moving for the council.
Thank you. City clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Potem Jackson? Four. Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Shorijak?
Four.
And Councilmember Willis.
Against.
Great. The motion passes three to one. And obviously, our, the city staff is here to support you to clarify anything. Thank you so much for your willingness to, to help be a part of this community for the next year. I look forward, if everything goes as planned, to working with you.
Me too. I'm looking forward to getting down to business. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your confidence and your faith.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go ahead and take a five-minute or 10-minute recess here, if that's okay. I can keep going if we want to keep going. Let me kind of get oriented here in the total agenda. We just, we just handled 13.1 and 13.2, and that really brings us to, yeah, let's pause here, if that's okay, counsel. We'll knock that last item. We'll have one public hearing and I think that's it. Just, okay? So let's reconvene. It is 8:09, 8:15, if we can, so we don't waste too much time. If we need longer, obviously, we'll just get started when we come back.
You're like, oh, you're like, oh, boy, I got K next to me.
I'm going to cheer you up.
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 When he was starting, yeah, when he was starting to play.
Keep down, I wasn't about to.
And it's always the same thing from what I understand, some.
Yeah, it's always, yeah, it's always an insult, it's always, you know, some big incident. It's what it is all the time. And the thing, you think about this, he was given an opportunity to have.
That's why I understand too.
And, and, who's fault is that?
Exactly.
But nobody here was part of that.
Yep.
Yeah.
But yeah.
It was just the same way with all of your work.
I mean, sometimes you have to be in the job, you have to, you have to, you have to.
I don't know.
I mean, sometimes you have to be in the job, you have to, you have to.
Thank you.
I didn't do it at first, I was going to be company.
I didn't do it at first, I was going to be company.
I didn't do it at first, I was going to be company.
I didn't do it at first, I was going to be company.
I didn't do it at first, I was going to be company.
I didn't do it at first, I was going to be company.
I didn't do it at first, I was going to be company.
I didn't do it at first, I was going to be company.
I didn't do it at first, I was going to be company.
I didn't do it at first, I was going to be company.
No.
Okay.
Not related to this. Mine's over there. Yeah. Probably trying to stop me at a camera.
I mean, yes. I've only ever seen him here twice. Today was, you know, he was getting a little more loud. I let him finish his point, and the last point, when the timer came off, if he kept going, he was probably going to end up getting taken out.
And I'd let people go a little further, and I don't want.
That's where I heard.
He was starting to get there yet. He was really getting animated when that's, this is the worst part, I can definitely see it.
No one's here, it was technically already handled, it could have been handled, it'd be exciting.
Thank you. So no one is sharing. Hopefully, a commitment. I watched the meeting today at 1:00. They had, you know, the emails from.
Sandra Soto.
Hold on.
Usually doing your.
Usually doing your.
I'm a little bit.
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 Oh, shit.
First day I got.
I'm a little bit.
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 It's too scary.
Absolutely, and that's been very easy.
It was respected.
I don't know.
I don't know either.
I mean, the last thing we're all.
I'm just using.
I mean, maybe come on.
You can come down.
I'll go with you.
Are we ready to go?
Reconvene? Good, ready? All right. Go ahead and call the meeting back to order. It is 8:21 PM. We just finished up item 13.2. We are now at item 13.3, titled Space Coast Transportation Planning Organization, SCTPO, governing board appointment. Is the recommended is a motion to consider the appointment of a council member representing North Beach Coalition to serve as the voting delegate to the Space Coast Transportation Planning Organization governing board for the year 2026. I will say, the past five years has been really, it's had its challenges in what I recall internally focused legislative council, where we, we've done some work, and today we stand together, one town, one team, as our city manager has said in early days during the interview, and that really stuck with me and has continued, and I'm happy and very grateful for where we are today. I share that because my focus was inward, but I would like, if the council would choose the ability to step out and be the mayor, our charter and code talks about, with intergovernmental relations, and take your consideration to be appointed to serve on this SCTPO. If there's any desire from, from any other council member to be on that, I think we can certainly consider that, but I want to come out and express my desire. So, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I've served on this board for four years, and I have done everything I could to promote Cape Canaveral and facilitate safety issues for Cape Canaveral. I was able to bring the pedestrian hybrid beacon that was not on FDOT's plan. I was able to get that funded. That took a lot of work, a lot of effort, a lot of coordination, a lot of moving within the framework of government, if you will. I've also made a lot of connections, been on a number of boards, represented both Cape Canaveral and the TPO at a number of events. I serve on the Central Florida Safety Steering Committee for FDOT. I'm part of the MPOAC, and I am also nominated for the Space Coast TPO chair position. So it would be, in my opinion, in the best interest of Cape Canaveral for me to continue and to keep going with the way I'm going, because I have discussions with engineering, with FDOT, for additional pedestrian hybrid beacons along A1A, excuse me. And I think it would be an excellent opportunity for Cape Canaveral to exhibit its influence. And I think removing me from that position will make us take a step back in our involvement and where we are at this time.
Is there anyone else who is being interested in this position? Thank you, Councilmember Willis. Mayor Tim?
No, I'm not interested in that, taking care of it. I, I understand and I appreciate all of Councilmember Willis's work. I know he's worked on this board very diligently. However, with all of the, the, well, with all of the projects that we had being put off past 2027 and further on 528 and those kinds of things, and I may not be educated enough on this board to see what difference this would make right now if we made a change back to the mayor doing the position. And the reason is, we see Cocoa Beach, the mayor is, has been the voting delegate. So I certainly am in favor of our mayor doing what our mayor is supposed to be doing. So I'm, I'm, I will support you on your wanting to be on that governing board. I think Councilmember Willis has done a fantastic job, and he has done things that have been very helpful to our city. But, you know, FDOT has put us on the back burner on a lot of things, and so this may be actually the best time to do this. We don't have those projects moving forward right now. They've been pushed out.
Thank you. Mayor Tim Jackson, Councilmember Shoriak, is this something you were interested in?
No, sir.
Thank you. So knowing that, I appreciate it, and did you have any comments?
No.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Willis, and I echo what Mayor Tim said. Everything you just went through is appreciated, and the positive impact has, we can see what's happened. I don't view this as removing you. Every year, you were appointed by, I think, all of us for one year, and you fulfilled that. And I think it is up every year, and, you know, arguably, the charter tells us who should be in this, in our code, it says the mayor. And I could not be that in the past because the issues internally were, in my opinion, greater than the needs for anything our TPO could offer. And so this has been something that I've wanted to do, and I have not been. When we do look at the boards, it is mayors on many of those seats. Our former mayor, Randalls, stood there when he served. Mayor Hove really sort of did not, he didn't take the approach, he sort of wanted the council to go and handle those things. But I think anything that I can do to help is going to be positive. I wish you had more confidence in me, Councilmember Willis, that we wouldn't take a step backwards, as you quoted. But I'm trying to bring us together as a team, to work together, and there's been individual efforts that have not given me a feeling that this is one town, one team, especially on the council. And so the, the issues on A1A, the people, the things that you said, the connections you made, the progress you made, the review, I hope you would stay involved as one town, one team, to work with me if this council chooses to appoint. And I hope that in the event I was not able to fulfill something that you believe that you would make that known and say, you know, at the council meeting, where you are not seeing improvements. And if I'm not making the progress this council feels is necessary, I might be wrong, but I think I can be removed at any point. And so, and I, and I don't want to be up there without the council's support. But I, I was elected to mayor in 2021, and here we are in 2025. I would have pursued that then, and I think we have. I would have pursued that then, and I think we have benefited greatly as a city when we do have our mayor there and the whole council's working together to be that representative that we need. And I think we I will give my best to this city to make sure that we get what we need, and that's all I can offer. I can't promise results, but I know I will represent the city to the best of my ability, and I will never do anything outside this council supports, whether it be in a resolution, from the words I say, to the things I write, to anything that I advocate for. So thank you for what you have contributed. But this year, I'm in a position to do it, and I've never had the opportunity to do this, in my opinion. I did not have the, it was not prudent. So I'm today willing, this council can decide who they want to appoint, and that is all I have to say. So if there's not anything else, council, I think typically we would, somebody would make a motion for the willing candidates, and we'll follow the course.
I'll make a motion that Mayor Morrison is our delegate for the S. C. T. P. O., keeping in line with the intergovernmental agreement, as well as the fact that mayors are doing the representation as the delegates.
A second.
Got a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Jackson, a second by Councilmember Shoriak. Is there any more discussion on that item?
Let me just clarify that there are only two mayors on the T. P. O. Governing Board out of twenty. But I I know you-
Twenty cities, though.
Well, there's also county commissioners. There's there's even more than twenty. I mean, you have county commissioners, you have multiple representatives from other cities.
I understand.
And I understand, and I've voted for you twice, two years in a row for it. But I do think that I sat here and looked at this, and I'm like, the mayor of Cocoa Beach is doing this for his city. I think that we should give our mayor the opportunity to have that role since it's defined in the charter that way.
I'm not arguing against that. I'm just merely saying that I've been able to put us in a position where we could have even more influence, not that you wouldn't, but it takes time to get there. It takes time to be considered for the chair of the T. P. O. It's not something you're just going to be able to walk in there and get. It takes time to be on the boards of F. D. O. T. Advisory Committees. That's all I'm saying.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, City Clerk?
Mayor Pro Tim Jackson?
Four.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Shoriak?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
Against.
Okay, item thirteen point three passes three to one. Thank you for your support and confidence. I will give you my best and and report back and and answer any questions here as as those meetings come forward to the City Council and work with our city administration, city manager.
May I ask one question before we leave this agenda item?
Yes.
Can we get some kind of reports on what's going on with this going forward? Because, I mean, I I have voted two years in a row, and I couldn't tell you what we're doing for our city on this. And hearing this about the chair position, this is the first time I've heard it.
I'm not aware about that. What is the chair position?
It's the chair of the T. P. O.
What is the chair? Are you, you were the chair?
He was in line for it.
I was nominated to be on there, to take that position. Yes, we've given reports every time we've had reports. So and I'm sure Mayor Morrison, you'll do a fine job. I just put a lot into it and wanted to continue. That was it.
Thank you. I look forward to working with you, and we can put discussion items on before those meetings to set expectations and try to equip me with as much information. I I think I can learn pretty quickly, and I've been paying attention to a lot of the items. I've attended T. P. O. events, certainly not involved to the level because, like I said, it was not the highest and best use of of my time. And today, we stand in a position where I'm excited about going out to represent the city, so thank you. I think that brings us to item thirteen point four, one public hearing item. This is the second reading and final hearing on ordinance oh seven twenty twenty-five. City Attorney will read it.
Okay, this is the second and final reading of ordinance number zero seven dash twenty twenty-five, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Cape Canaveral, Florida, amending Chapter one ten zoning, Article eight residential planned unit developments of the city code to update and clarify the procedures and standards, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions, incorporation into the code severability in an effective date. It's also a public hearing item. Since first reading, there was one change that was made based on the comments during first reading by the City Council, and that's a simple, straightforward change on the top of page twenty-four regarding the maximum height. There was one clarification that was made that the maximum height of of a of a structure or building shall be twenty, sorry, forty-five feet. So that that was, that clarification was made. The existing language reads buildings shall not exceed the maximum height allowed in the zoning district in which they are constructed. If you recall, during the first reading, the R. P. U. D. is a zoning district in and of itself, so that sent, one sentence is being modified to say that buildings shall not exceed forty-five feet in height with respect to an R. P. U. D. zoning district if the council were to approve one in the future. I'd be happy to answer any, you know, technical questions you have regarding the ordinance, if you have any. Also, staff was charged with taking a look at some of the sizes of properties, vacant properties that are around town, and I think staff provided a small little spreadsheet there that that itemizes those properties that exceed four and a half acres.
I don't know if your, your microphone's on.
Is it?
It doesn't. I I hear every word you're saying.
Okay, there we go.
For the record, yeah.
Sorry.
Yes.
Oh, my gosh.
There we are.
Sorry. Give me one second here. Okay. Tamsin Bell, Community and Economic Development Director. This, K. Pre- or Councilwoman Jackson, per your question last time, we did produce nine vacant parcels. Only one of them was outside the E. E. O. D. Those were vacant ones currently. There were six hundred and fifteen parcels throughout the entire city that were four acres and above, and so we're talking, this ordinance really applies to about two percent of total properties.
Okay. So two percent of the total properties, and how many were in, how many were outside of the E. E. O. E. O. D.?
Of the vacant ones, only one. The, going through the six hundred, for it was a little labor intensive for the sake of this meeting. But, yeah, as far as any that could be developed currently.
Okay, tell me that again. I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry. As far as the ones that were, there there's, there were six hundred and fifteen that are already developed.
Mm-hmm.
The ones that are able to be developed, there is only one that laid outside the E. E. O. D.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that and that spreadsheet is just an itemized list of properties that are in excess of four and a half feet, under common ownership, and currently vacant. They don't include, you know, currently developed properties, correct?
There's a, there's a second spreadsheet that has the much larger list on it. That's for everything. That that was a request of former Mayor Pro Tim Callen to have the total list of vacancies or total list of properties as well as-
That's not in the agenda.
Uh, it was, uh, added?
Separate supplemental.
I got it. I got this supplement our director's talking about, but this one?
Yes, correct.
Agreed.
So would you state that again, City Attorney? You said four and a half feet?
No. Oh, the the change between first and second reading?
Mm-hmm.
Was just to put a maximum height for buildings and structures at forty-five feet. Forty-five feet is the maximum height in residential?
But what did you just say in the last, when we were just talking? I I didn't catch it.
I was just, I was just commenting about the the spreadsheet that's in the agenda package, not the supplemental.
Oh, okay.
Right. The one in the agenda package is just vacant.
Correct.
Vacant properties that-
Okay, those are vacant.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
The supplemental are currently developed.
Okay, thank you. Are there any more questions that we can ask? Or City Attorney, Director, City Manager, technical questions? This is a public hearing item, so we're going to let the public have the opportunity to speak, and we can come back and discuss it further. But at this point, want to try to get to the public. Mayor Pro Tim Jackson, any more technical questions?
Just one more.
Yes, please.
So literally, we have one that is eligible to be the four-letter acronym, R. P. U. D., or however we have it in there. There's only one lot that is eligible. Is that, or one parcel, that's it?
Well, with this ordinance, anything that were to be changed to an R. P. U. D. would be on a case-by-case basis, to be only approved by councils. So this puts more of the stewardship in councils oversight.
Okay, that's what I was curious. All right, very good. Thank you. That was my last question.
But your question, I want to make sure, are we saying there's only one that the council could even consider based on the language we're approving?
Well, one R. P. U. D. is in a residential zone.
Okay.
The others are in the economic opportunity overlay-
I see.
-development district, and that means that it would be C. One or higher. Am I correct, City Attorney, which means we would have to?
At the, the, the spreadsheet that's in the agenda item is just vacant land. So for an R. P. U. D. zoning designation, you need to have a residential future land use map designation. I don't see that information on this. I got the, I think we got it in the right-hand column. Some of those properties look like they're residential, others are not residential. So an RP, the zoning district map is not static, and neither is, neither are the parcel sizes for for lands in the city of Cape Canaveral, right? So, as you know, land can be aggregated. So, you know, while while there are vacant properties that today meet the minimum acreage requirement in the proposed R. P. U. D., other properties could be aggregated, reassembled to meet the minimum acreage. That's number, that's number one. And number two, the ordinance would also apply to properties with, that meet the minimum acreage that are currently developed if there's a redevelopment opportunity. So I wouldn't get too fixated on the current-
You're right.
-state of the parcel sizes that could change in the future. One of the thing, we talked about during first reading is that the R. P. U. D. ordinance would provide flexibility, creativity. You never know what some development might do in the future to aggregate land to meet the minimum acreage, to do a creative residential R. P. U. D. project. You know, that's to be determined. This ordinance, if it was, were passed, it certainly would provide more of a creative incentive for developers. You know, it remains to be seen whether it will be utilized. The current R. P. U. D. ordinance for decades has been on the books and has never been utilized because, as, you know, as I told the council at the last meeting, the current R. P. U. D. ordinance is anything but flexible. It's very, very rigid, so.
Thank you for clarifying that. It's the data that was provided not static, like you said, it it and with the council's ability to adjust, but it it's valued and was provided because it at least gives us an idea of, you know, what's possible today. And I guess it's theoretically, as people acquire properties and they can merge, anything could happen.
Yeah.
Okay.
And and with this ordinance, it just creates a toolbox for council to have more oversight and help shape high-quality, sustainably designed, designs with resiliency in mind so we don't wind up with the same kind of cookie cutter. We can be more adaptive and and future-focused in our, in our, and and also have that that element of where to be, to reach this designated, it has to come to council to decide even if we want to allow for it anyways.
Thank you. We do have to be reminded of that because sometimes you feel like you're, you know, you're approving a project or something like that.
Yeah.
We're just approving the ordinance to even give the opportunity. That's excellent. Is there anything else?
Just, just reiterating, and also for Councilmember Shoriak, who, who, I don't know if you had tuned in for the last reading or if you're familiar with this at all, but, you know, it's a nice kind of trade-off for flexibility in design, yet more stewardship and control to the city staff and and council in order to promote quality future design in in our city.
Thank you. Let's go ahead and take it to public counsel. This is a public hearing item. We are doing the second and final reading of ordinance number oh seven twenty twenty-five, Residential Planned Unit Developments Procedures and Standards. We revised it from the first reading to the second. Our City Attorney and Director went through those changes, and if you intend to speak, we ask you please come forward. Thank you.
Thank you for your work, guys. I had the pleasure of meeting with the attorney and the city manager in a meeting about a month ago, and they told me you had this coming. It's the first time I heard of this afternoon for the last reading. My question is basically the four acres. I wonder why you nailed it down to four acres is one question. The second one is, you have R. One, R. Two, and R. Three, and if you were to take Ridgewood to Presidential and take the whole block and somebody wanted to do something with the four-acre criteria, you couldn't even do it. If you were to take from A. One A. to Hibiscus, which is an area, and all this is zoned commercial and want to do a nice P. U. D., you couldn't do it. The four acres you are limiting, as Ms. King said earlier, to big developers. You have to think that an acre in this city is worth one and a half to two million dollars. So if you want to buy an acre, you've got to buy a bunch of people out, tear their house down, and go with a P. U. D., and that's four acres. You couldn't do a city block here. You could do, well, maybe the bigger city blocks down the road. And what I was thinking is that the city council, wise thinking, looking forward ahead, that a P. U. D. is a very good thing. Vieira's got them, Duran's got them, they're all over the place. And to keep an open mind and not to limit it to a minimal four acres or don't talk to us, don't even entertain it. But to open up the P. U. D.'s to future developments, like I wouldn't mind the house on, or the property on Adams Avenue.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, the old condo that needs torn down, and the lot beside it could be a really nice P. U. D., and it's already zoned for forty-five feet, and it's an R. Three. Someone could go in there and get real creative, but with four acres, you've limited the creativity. Your own staff tells you there's only one available lot outside of the district, the overlay district. I think you had another name for it, Economic Development District or something?
Economic Opportunity Overlay District.
Right. So what I'm trying to say is, let's, if we want to see the city move forward, I mean, you have the fastest-growing port in the nation, you are the largest space station, and we have the opportunity to develop the city tremendously and to still keep it a home. and we have the opportunity to develop the city tremendously and to still keep it a home city. But we need the creativity, and, uh, small guys like myself, four acres is just out of reach. And that's why I was wondering where the four-acre criteria came up. Someone has come to me that has two and a half acres in an R-zone, and they've asked what I could do, and I said, "Right now, you can't do anything."
Thank you, Mr. Berger. I think, uh, you called yourself small, but what you, you've done work that's, I think, made a big impact, a positive impact in the community, and so your opinion's valued, and I- Yes, thank you. Is there, are there any other comments from the public? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close, uh, the public hearing, public participation, bring it back to the council. Some of those questions we heard. The first one is why limit it to four?
I mean, the thought process was simply this. Um, the R-P-U-D is, is not, is not for every, every size piece of property. Okay? The current R-P-U-D ordinance has a minimum ten-acre requirement. This ordinance, R-P-U-D, is about building neighborhoods, not doing infill housing or small, little one-offs. This, this ordinance, again, is about building neighborhoods, minimum of fifteen dwelling units, minimum size, four acres. The thought process was to reduce from ten acres to four to provide more flexibility and opportunities for potential developers to build residential neighborhoods, not one-off small projects. And the small projects are important, but thi- this ordinance is focused on a different target than, again, just small, one-off, in, you know, infill development projects or, or corner lots and things like that. So that was the thought process.
Yeah, I think that its size, what we call small, might be the, what's important, because Mr. Berger agrees, is a good point. I mean, it's, I mean, just even at a million dollars an acre, that's crazy that we've got to that point. He said one and a half to two million dollars, but it's, we all see what, what's happened. You know, one acre, it's not a small investment, you know? It, but it's certainly, um, well, I mean, we had no chance at the ten acre. Today, we're at four, which opens it up. Is there another process outside of R-P-U-D? Couldn't the PUD process, if you took a, I think you had mentioned Adams, or just take any property? I guess what would be too small? Are we saying that one acre is too, not enough to do what the intent of this is? I guess that would be my question is.
That's, that's the thought. This is targeted towards building a neighborhood with a minimum of fifteen dwelling units. So, you know, when, when you start netting out after doing stormwater and, and the roads, right? Four, four acres is minimum is, 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 is probably as low as that you, you can probably go. That's just my supposition. Um, there are other opportunities for mixed-use PUDs. That's a different ordinance, um, that the city has on the books.
That was it.
So, but that's a mixed-use, where you have a com- a commercial component and a re- and a residential component. Then you have other traditional zoning designations that allow, certainly allow development on, on one acre, half acre, um, you know, as long as it meets the minimum area requirements for, for lot size under the z- specific zoning designation. You know, again, this is, I think, as the Community Development Director indicated, th- this, this is a tool that has a, a, a certain target. Not all tools are appropriate for, for all, for all parcels. The focus is on, you know, again, um, trying to create these neighborhoods and sustainable, sustainability and, and stormwater retention and creative design to, to try to make those, the small neighborhoods.
I'd like to add that with the height maximum that we're including in there, the, that ratio to acreage, uh, the building height, you, if you had, if you reduced it further, then you'd have to go up significantly higher to accommodate fifteen, so you'd-
Kinda run out of room.
Yeah, yeah, so instead of going up, which we're maintaining a height limit, that's where the, that's some grounding for the four acre. Justification for the four acre.
And I think he had mentioned R3. I think we got forty-five foot there.
Yeah, on page twenty-four, twenty-seven.
Mm-hmm.
It gives the minimum floor area, area for square footage and things like this. And you can see with the number of units that we're talking about, this wouldn't be applicable to s- too small of a lot. You wouldn't be able to get the dwellings on there.
But that, that kinda corrects itself, right? I mean, that doesn't, we're not waiving those other zoning.
I just mean it would fit within the four acres.
Mm-hmm.
But if you start looking at less than four acres, then you're gonna have problems with all of the definition on the code because of the square footage, the setbacks, and everything else. So, um, this is a different thing for density, whereas a neighborhood, a small neighborhood, whereas, you know, we'd have to look at something other than that if you're talking two or three lots and building a little, small dwelling community there. It wouldn't fit in the code.
Yeah, I under- I think that makes sense. I understand that. I'd never want, I mean, I think, well, Councilmember Willis? Councilmember Shorayak, any? I think, uh, you know, we, we learn a lot when we talk to the property owners and what they're trying to do, and I, I would say that Mr. Berger's, uh, comments is probably not the only one. As we look at Cape Canaveral, if we do think there's other properties, it would help in, in a, in a way to make Cape Canaveral offer those more unique things where we haven't seen development happen. It would be a matter of, uh, bringing it back and really, we did a major change to this. That would just be a number change at that point, right, to, to reconsider it? Because I don't want that to go unheard, and I think if you're, um, as our director, see that there, there's some opportunities, I'd be willing to look at lowering it in the future if that's something that works. But for tonight, do we wanna do that? I think we're running out of room and space.
Well, I think that that's more of a, a one-off situation that would need to be brought to council. And I, I would have to ask our City Attorney how it's going on, you know, streamlining our process where those things come to us, where we could-
Oh, yeah, we're coming along fine, actually. In December, we're having a P&amp;Z meeting, and not only are we having a whole new site plan, uh, process to streamline it, right? As council-directed, we're also have the Board of Adjustment, uh, proposal out there to consolidate and designate the Board of Adjustment responsibilities to the City Council. If both those ordinances get through P&amp;Z in December, the council is gonna have those ordinances on first reading for you to consider, and that's, you know, that was the marching orders that you provided, is to streamline the process, make it, you know, more, um, you know, um, appropriate for developers to come in and, and not have to go to all these different types of boards, but to streamline it. You're gonna have an opportunity to vote on those on, in December.
And I think that because of that, when we have a situation like we're discussing with the needs for a, a builder that's wanting to do something that's gonna improve our city, that going straight from P&amp;Z and it coming to us for decision is gonna streamline that process. It may not fit right now, you know, with the size lots you're talking about into this particular plan, but we shouldn't cut it off at the knees. We need to look at how we can work to provide the opportunity for people to build better structures.
Can I ask a question? Absolutely. We do need you to come up to the meeting unless, Council, are we okay with-
Yeah.
Mr. Berger coming back up here, please, yes.
I've been approached twice, and both parcels are just under three acres. And there's two of them in particular, and they've asked me that they prefer to do housing, and I've told them, you know, candidly, with your zoning, it's fifteen per acre. So if three acres are under, you're gonna get forty-five units, but it'd be nicer to do a housing-type package. One of them is commercial, too, and they'd rather do something like that, but I said, "Can't." Can't with the city codes. Are you saying that I can go directly to you with a good plan and, and bypass planning and zoning? Because planning and zoning can't even entertain it. Right now, the way it's set up.
I mean, the, the council gave direction to take on more of the responsibilities, to make final determinations. The Planning and Zoning Board will still function as the advisory board to the council.
Well, that's what I, I'm, that's why I said the four acres. If somebody comes up with a really creative idea, we can't do it for less than four acres. I mean, that's, and I understand that, that's the code. That's the rules we have to play with. We have to look at Plan B, which is not, I mean, your Plan B and R2 and R3 is seventeen feet wide. That's the minimal for the interior lots. And you can get fifteen on an acre. So you get an acre, you got fifteen units, but you're restricted. You can't get creative and try to turn it into nine, try to turn it into six and play with it, do zero lot lines, have sideways garages, get, make a nice little community. That's why I'm just trying to wonder why you had the four, and if the four is what you think is in the best interest of the city, then us out here on the outside, I mean, I've been a resident for over forty years, we have to live with that, with those rules, and some of my, I'd rather be more creative.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, I, I think maintaining dialogue with the community, no matter what we decide today, and if an opportunity that looks like, hey, you know, now that we're looking at it, we think we could do something on, and help create Cape Canaveral on three acre, two, whatever. And, you know, it's same questions, well, what's the total impact? How many does that, you know? And I think, um, that will be, that would be something I'd be willing to look at. And, you know, instead of those final site plans here in the update from our City Attorney being approved by P&amp;Z, you know, it would come to us, but I think at this point where we are and the work that our staff and city attorneys put in, the four is, sounds like the, the best number for now. And that's not just picking a number four, right? I mean, that's, we analyzed it, we saw the impact that it would have, and after not seeing anything at the ten acre, I'm saying I'm willing to consider going lower, but I don't know if, if I, I'm able to do that tonight at where we are in the process. But if it's in a month or two, and to me, that's in, a smaller change, it'd take two readings and notice and stuff, and we hope to get it right and not have to touch it, and it's a success, but I'd be willing to do that, um, in the future, but that's it.
Well, and I think zoning has a lot to do with it, because we're talking about some of these lots are in C1 and the commercial zone, some are in the residential zone, and that's a different scenario. So I know this one was brought down from ten acres to four in order to form a, a smaller neighborhood than ten acres. We may need to look at what can we do for those lots that are smaller, that's not this, but something different.
That's a good idea.
Right.
Okay, so I think that would-
Yeah, and we didn't change-
The project.
Yeah, I mean, that might be another, another option. Again, our, our focus was on maintaining the purpose and intent of the R-P-U-D, which explicitly states that it's for planned residential neighborhoods and communities. So we, we looked at it from that prism and what this tool is for. There may be other ideas for different lot sizes for, to add more creativity and get out of the, you know, traditional Euclidean zoning designations, R1, R2, R3, um, but we did not analyze that. I mean, our focus was on maintaining the purpose and intent of the R-P-U-D and looking at establishing small neighborhoods and communities.
And so, City Attorney, if we had, um, for example, our Chair of R-P&amp;Z, if he had a, a person that was interested in creative development, we're, we're talking about creative development in one of those areas, and it's not an R-P-U-D. With our new, and I'm kind of shooting blind because you've been working on this, streamlining the process, is there any way we could think of or accommodate a process where that could be brought up and discussed instead of just, nope, it's not in our code, since we may need to get creative with some of those?
I mean, every, every Planning and Zoning Board, uh, meeting, they always open it up for public input and see if anybody has any comments about, you know, all sorts of issues, and, and, you know, we hardly get people showing up, and the P&amp;Z Board, you know, could, could study issues. You know, um, we, again, we didn't focus on the smaller parcels for this exercise. We're, we're trying to keep the purpose and intent the same.
Right.
Right? So that's another issue we could certainly study, and, um, Mr. Berger certainly can come to the Planning and Zoning Board meeting and, and request that, you know, we take a look at that and see what the P&amp;Z thinks. And then we can focus on, on it, maybe a different type of solution for what, what he's talking about. There's never a closed door, I, you know, as long as Mr., Mr. Russell's been Chair, and I know Mr. Russell's termed out, but, you know, he's always opened the floor and is, was receptive to hearing, um, concerns of the community about, um, you know, our codes and, and, and exploring, um, you know, changes, that changes need to be explored.
I'm good with this, then.
I, I think it's good, and I think we heard some ideas tonight, and I saw you shaking your head over there about maybe there is something separate, as our City Attorney and Mayor Protim had brought up. I hope the conversation continues, Mr. Berger, with our city staff, and obviously, the council's here, and, um, if we can help him, I think we can help his dilemma, right, of, uh, this is Cape Canaveral, ninety-eight percent developed. You know, we're, we're kinda here. Uh, I think we, we have to look at, you know, does this help a lot of properties? And, and if we can make that happen, that's a win-win. So, that is it. We've, uh, had the ordinance read, we've answered technical questions, we went to the public. And I should ask if, since Mr. Berger, we let him back, did anyone else wanna have any follow-up comments? I wanna offer that to everyone. Okay. Seeing none, uh, council, if we're ready, we can make a motion.
I'll make a motion that we pass this, with this change.
The ordinance.
The ordinance with this change.
Okay.
Oh-seven, ordinance oh-seven dash twenty-twenty-five as, as written includes the change.
When you said change, it, it is not a change from what we were presented. The change we voted in last meeting that was presented revised today.
Correct.
So, so that would be as written, City Attorney?
Yes, sir.
As written. Okay. Okay, got a motion by Mayor Protim Jackson.
Hold a second.
Second by Councilmember Willis. City Clerk, is the motion clear? That's pretty simple, just making sure, because I know we talked through a lot. Any further discussion? City Clerk?
Mayor Protim Kellam, I'm sorry, Mayor Protim Jackson, four. Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Shorayak?
Four.
And Councilmember Willis.
Four.
Ordinance oh-seven, twenty-twenty-five passes four-oh. Final reading. Thank you all for your involvement and participation on that one. Hopefully, it's a, it results in some positive things for the community, and I- That brings us to really the end of our- us to really the end of our, not only our hearing, we don't have any items for discussion that was submitted, but I just want to say that Councilmember Shoriak, that, the items for discussion are great ways, you know, you might chat with your city manager, but if you just need to get the council's opinion on any ideas that you have, we've had five-minute discussions, we've had, seems like five-hour discussions sometimes, and that has been a wonderful way to sort of get confidence if you've got something you want to share and talk through, and that we don't have any, and then typically we'll do the reports. Is anything you want to report? Our city manager did put a vacation rental report on here. I don't know if there was any intention to go over anything with that.
No, no intention, intention, mayor. In the future, that will just appear under informational, and if there are any questions by any council member, we'll entertain them, but we're just trying to make this a routine report.
I want to say thank you for putting it together. I mean, we've come a long ways from the whole short-term rental and the craziness that it demands, so thank you for everything you've done with task force all the way down the line. And then we obviously have our monthly financial report. Are there any, I think the intent was just to have these as informational, but council, is there anything we wanted to discuss on those? Item 15, first vacation rental report. We're not approving anything, it's just a matter of information.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Willis.
Speaking of the vacation rental report, I had a town hall meeting with several condo association members and committees here in Cape Canaveral, and they expressed some interest in having the DBPR be updated for their condominium associations, because they are having difficulty. Any self-managed condominium association, or HOA, does not have the same access as a managed condominium. So it's difficult for a self-managed group to enter information on the DBPR. I had spoken with, at a luncheon with Senator Mayfield about the DBPR, and I know Mr. Touchberry had mentioned some issues with our vacation rentals and the DBPR. And Mr. Touchberry, I'd let him know that I was going to submit what the HOAs and condo associations had given me to Senator Mayfield's office to see if they could push something along in changes to make it easier for the HOAs, and I also submitted what city manager Touchberry put together for the DBPR in that they are not notifying us of when someone gets a license to operate a vacation rental in our jurisdiction. So we're asking them to update the DBPR to let us know, let city staff know, when a license is applied for within Cape Canaveral. And it's, honestly, it is an easy software fix, if they're willing to look at it, where they could just send that notification to our people and make it a lot easier for us to know when somebody is applying for a vacation rental here in the city. And I think that Mr. Touchberry put together a very involved statement on what we needed, and that was submitted. Hopefully, they can update that for us, so it can make our staff's job easier.
How, when you say submitted, what does that mean?
Well, I just, I just sent an email to Senator Mayfield's office. Her staff was going to look at it.
And did you copy it, anyone, or city?
Well, the city manager has, knows what we're doing.
Thank you for that update, but I just want to be clear. I mean, these are the things that I think, why are we working independently and not working together? So seriously, thank you. I think we can, if our city manager sends it and says, council, you know, go talk to them and push it, that's better, but to me, it's sort of the left hand doesn't know what the right hand's doing. It's a good thing, and I agreed with the city manager, but if, I would be very hesitant, I mean, I've just conducted, to send stuff like that. Obviously, our city manager can, but I just don't understand why we're not working together on those things, or all of us are encouraged to send an update. But I'll lock arms, let's do a resolution together or approve moving forward, but to me, if I ran into Mayfield, I may have not known that, and so thankfully, you shared it with me. Senator Mayfield's office, obviously, is just another intergovernmental relationship, and your efforts are appreciated, and I hope it's rewarding, but it is sort of getting into that area that I think we need to tighten up a little bit.
I understand.
You have the right to freely express, but when it's, is it as Councilmember Willis? Or is it as the city of Cape Canaveral, when you submitted it?
It was just Councilmember Willis.
I'd love to help, and I think we have four others who'd love to help, too, and I think it should be more about the city of Cape Canaveral, not Mayor Wes Morrison, not Councilmember Willis, or any other person. And I will sign it, and I hope we could all sign together, or a city manager decides who's been appointed and to fulfill the administrative duties. I have no issue with anything there, so that's it. Thank you for sharing that.
I have one thing to ask.
Yes, Councilmember Jackson, or Mayor Protim Jackson.
So I met with Tamsin and her group, coordinated through the city manager, to give them feedback on what I knew of how to look for, for example, for the hotel collective licenses and things like that, and some, and went through the DBPR website with them and showed them some ways that they could look up to see. There's, it's, there is manual stuff in that process right now, but I wanted to let you know, I did, after offering on council, the city manager did coordinate that, and I did go meet with them just to step through that, and gave them some air DNA information showing the number of rentals out there, as well as, we discussed the fact that we've got more and more of them that are going up for sale, because people are not, you know, hitting their, covering their expenses right now in a lot of cases.
I believe it. I know you've been watching it, and thank you. Again, I just want to clarify, thank you, Councilmember Willis, you've obviously advocated. I am asking, can we do that plus also do it as a city? And so I didn't want that to come out wrong, that we will be, if five emails come in at a minimum, and I know we can streamline that and get it better, but it's, would be great that we're sort of working together on those things, or at least setting expectation to go, hey, we're always going to independently send things, but those are some really good ideas, and I hope it's fruitful. I just, I think we can help by working as a team on some of those things, and that's it, and thank you for the update. And if you think I'm looking at it wrong, we're all, I'm willing, I'm not, I don't want to sound, I, I'm excited about your involvement, and I hope that you know that. You've been, from day one, worked hard to get out there, but I just noticed that there was some solo paths that really, I'm like cheering that on, but why are we finding out about it now when we could have helped on the front end? And so that's not the case with what you just shared. It's just been an issue in the city, and I've questioned it, and I've transparently tried to commune it, but communicate it as much as possible. Councilmember Willis, do you have any more reports?
Not at this time.
Mayor Protim Jackson?
Well, I'm just going to make one report. As I said, I met with Tamsin, and they'll discuss a little bit of that. The other thing is, I did go to a meeting where Port Commissioner Vaughn, help me with his name.
Van Volkenberg?
Van Volkenberg, thank you. He spoke about the importance of really looking at your elected port official, and so I think that that's something that our citizens need to be aware of. That is a true elected position within a special taxing district that we're a part of, and so as any new elections come up with the port, people really need to pay attention to that spot and make sure that those people that represent them on the port commission are people that they feel good with as a candidate.
Amen. Thank you. I don't have any reports other than a big thank you to all, and I see the progress in everything that's happening from every department, just really big things are getting done, and we are further along in our new city managers as far as progress than I even expected. So big thanks to all who make it happen every day. It does not go unnoticed. I know I don't see it all, but I also don't compliment everything and say, and I can get better at that, and I'm like, at least once a month, I'll say thank you, and so thank you for everything. I went ahead because I wanted to give you the last, Councilmember Shoriak. The floor, if you have any reports. What did you work on this month, sir?
I made it up here and took office, so I almost made it through a whole meeting so far. That's my report.
No, we're excited to have you. Thank you.
Thank you.
City manager, any reports?
No reports, mayor. Thank you for asking.
City attorney?
I've already updated you what's going to the planning and zoning board per your direction.
That's great news. City clerk's office, I got a couple...
Yes, we have a report.
Oh, I'm sorry, we do have a report. Would you, go ahead.
I don't know.
Okay, I'll take it. My apologies. So we're converting Laserfish to the cloud, and those dates, again, December 5th through the 8th potentially, where access to that system will not be available to anyone while we make that migration, you know, from one to the other. So if that changes, we'll certainly keep the council posted. You never know with technology, they tell you one thing, and something happens, and now you're going a little bit longer, so.
The December 5th through December 8th is the estimated window of...
Estimated period, right. I mean, it could change a little.
Okay. I don't think that's going to be, I mean, if it gets right around the council meeting, that's where we see a spike and people want to access the agenda, but that's great. Hopefully, it's a success.
Successful merger. Well, we'll keep the council posted. I mean, we are migrating public records, so it's an important process.
Thank you. Any other updates? That's a big one. Go into the cloud. Did I hear something over here, somebody? I'm hearing things. It's late. 9:24, okay. Well, I think that that's everyone. Let's go ahead. If there's no objection.